Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a court?
Vice Mayor Ashby. We will go back to her at the end. I know she was online a moment ago. Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gera, I believe will be absent this evening. We'll keep an eye out for him. Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
I love you.
Love you too.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ashby.
I am here, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Mayor Steinberg.
Here. Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Laloe, would you give us the honor of leading us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance, please?
Absolutely. Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nissenan people, the Southern Medu, Valley and Plain Mewak, Padwin-Winton peoples, and the people of Walton Ranch area, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in an active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contribution, and lives. Thank you. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Laloe, for getting us started tonight. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the members of the public, the city staff. Let us begin tonight with the consent calendar. Are there questions on the consent calendar or items that members would want to talk about or vote on separately? I know there is one item from the city attorney where Councilmembers Chenier and Valenzuela need to recuse themselves. That is...
Yes, Mayor, it's item 15. That's why I raised my hand.
Item 15. Okay, so we're going to take item 15 up separately and take that up last so that Councilmembers Valenzuela and Chenier can fully participate in the remainder of the consent calendar.
Mayor, I don't want to pull it off consent. I just have some questions I'd like to put out on item 12 for when it comes back to us in a week.
Okay, very good. We'll get to that in a moment. Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Laloe?
Yes, Ms. Mayor. I don't want to pull anything out. I just have a question on item number 10.
Okay. Okay, we'll get to that one.
Thank you.
As well. Anybody else? I don't see anybody else. All right. So if it's just comments and questions, why don't we take a... I'd like to take a motion on the entire consent calendar, at least items 1 through 14. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr...
Second.
Madam Clerk?
And before we go, I'd like to state that for item number two, the resolution is going to be amended. The date of the hearing is March 15th, 2022. The resolution in error said 2021, so the correct date is 22.
That's rubbish.
Thank you.
It is the weed and rubbish abatement notification. That was the joke. Thank you. All right. Let's hear comments from Councilmember Laloe on item 10 and questions from Councilmember Chenier on item 12.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Just a quick question. On item number 10, pass a motion by two-thirds both waiving the 10-day posting requirement for contracts over 1 million. It's only pertaining to this particular... that these contracts, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Councilmember.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Chenier on item 12.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, I don't want to pull this. I'll be voting for it. I do have some questions as we go forward. One is on a command staff and Councilmember Ashby or... sorry, Vice Mayor Ashby on the work that she's done on this. A lot of work has gone into it, and I'm certainly excited about the jobs aspect and just the renaissance of the area, taking the arena and making it into something really nice. It is a major project, and I have a couple of questions. And having just gone through three years and continuing to go through something similar with Aggie Square, these are questions that came up as I was looking at the item. And I've talked to a few folks, including Mr. Dorsa with the Kings, and I know some others now are asking to meet with me this week, which I look forward to. I also completely understand this is a privately funded project so that there is a difference between this and Aggie Square. So I want to put that on the table, and I don't have expectations that the same things, the same requirements would happen. But again, a couple of questions. And one is, in the conversations I've had, there's two things that may come about at some point. One is an EIFD in the area. That would be partially around the hospital and partially, potentially around the residential. Would like to know if that's the case and what the timing of that would be. I do not believe that there is a community benefit agreement that is attached to this project at this point. I know that there would be a lot of benefits, particularly the jobs, which I think is the best thing that we can do. But is there a CBA? I've also was told in talking to Mr. Dorsa today that there may come back to the city with a centine type of request around jobs and subsidizing jobs. If those things happen, this then does have public funding. And where we are working on some of these ordinances as a result of Aggie Square around CBAs on major projects like the... In the spirit of that, I'd like to see how the proponents talk about what they're doing in the community so we can get a good idea of that. The other aspect of my questions, and this is not something that our staff would do nor would they have the expertise, but is around the impact of a hospital, of one more hospital in the area. We have great relationships with the systems that are there now. How does this hospital impact what our other... our long-term partners, the other hospital systems are doing? Will they be taking Medi-Cal patients if so, kind of at the same ratio as others or not? Do we need another trauma center? Do we have the evidence behind that that shows that we need it? So questions like that, really around the impact in the industry. To me, if that could be answered, that would be great. So I would look forward to that discussion when this comes back formally.
Okay. Thank you very much. So...
Mayor, I'd like to speak to the item two unless you want to say something right now about it.
On item which? On item?
12.
On item 12. Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Yeah. Just want to say that I am very excited about this project. Obviously, many, many, many years in the making here, lots of studies and lots of analysis to bring a hospital back. When we very first, 2011, started talking about moving the Kings downtown, we hired a company in Sacramento to do a best and highest use study. And hospital with a trauma center was the number-one need for the region, not just the area, and the number-one reuse. So really excited to bring this privately funded project forward. The project, as it stands right now, does not request any public subsidy, and EIFD is really similar. It isn't being asked for right now. It could be in the future, but Jay, as you know, those don't always work on medical facilities because, you know, doesn't generate the same kind of money as it would, and they don't work on residential either. So not sure it would actually be helpful to the project. But yeah, absolutely. Staff can answer all your questions. The trauma piece has been done in the past. We have that study. We can unearth it for you if you want it. That was done during the Think Big and Think Big Natomas discussions led by Kunal Merchant and myself way back in the day. And then just lastly, on this item, I wanted to just sort of foreshadow that the mayor and I are going to make a really fun and exciting announcement next week about the project, too. So just keep your eyes out for that. It'll be, I think, Monday. So hopefully it'll be my... Our Valentine to Sacramento, Mayor Steinberg. Looking forward to supporting this both today and next week, and for as long as it takes to see it rise out of the ground. And I should note that the biggest community benefit that we could possibly get is that the people north of the river will have a hospital.
Okay. For full discussion next week, and I look forward to it as well. Very, very good. Okay, we have three callers on the consent calendar. I assume they're on items 1 through 14. If they do touch 15, I'm going to ask any of those callers to wait because I want to make sure that Councilmembers Chenier and Valenzuela are off-screen and not participating in any way when it comes to item 15. So go ahead with the public comments, please.
First speaker is Emily Bayme Michaels.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This is Emily Bay Michaels calling on behalf of the Midtown Association regarding item 14 on the consent calendar. I wanted to call in tonight to comment, to say thank you to city staff, in particular the city manager, and Leslie and Val in Economic Development for their guidance on this process. I also want to make sure that I thank Councilmember Chenier once again for really bringing a diverse group of business stakeholders together to outline this process, to identify business priorities for our community back in 2021, and our mayor for his leadership in continuing to see this process through and reinvesting in our business corridors. For the better part of the last year, our organization has been in regular and consistent communication with city staff, sharing the perspective of businesses in Midtown around the challenges they faced through the pandemic. We heard over and over again from our stakeholders that recovery funds should be prioritized to support our small businesses through investments in public space lighting, event infrastructure, maintenance, and security. All the activities we propose to deliver in our agreement will help improve and support economic vitality of our small businesses as well as bring greater vibrancy to our core. On behalf of our almost 1,500 small businesses and our board, we are so grateful for this partnership and want to say thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jenna Abbott.
Thank you very much. My name is Jenna Abbott, and I'm the Executive Director of the River District, calling about item 14 on the consent agenda. And on behalf of the River District, I'd like to thank our elected officials and most especially city staff members, Leslie Fritchie, Denise Melvetti, Valerie Mamone, and the rest of the team in the Office of Innovation and Economic Development for the hard work and support as we create a cleaner river district and boost our public safety. Without the persistence and support of city elected officials and city staff, we really couldn't do many of the things that we do. So please always know that we are grateful for you and appreciate all of your hard work on our behalf. This funding will allow the River District to address three of our main challenges. A capital investment in commercial-grade sidewalk-mounted trash cans will allow trash generated by pedestrians to be disposed of appropriately instead of on the street. A large dumpster to collect the bags and dispose of large trash piles, which would otherwise remain on the street, creating a public health hazard. And additional funding for increased proactive security patrols and coverage for overnight calls for service to our stakeholders, your constituents. This helps create a feeling of public safety for all of us. This funding is a great start towards making the River District an attractive and accessible place for Sacramentoans to enjoy the shoreline of our beautiful Sacramento and American rivers, as well as attract the kind of development that our city needs and deserves. We hope the city will be able to work with the River District to create a multi-year plan to support this funding, similar to other multi-year plans supported for other business districts this week and in years past. We look forward to showing you the results of your investment in us, and we really look forward to continuing the work to make Sacramento a better place to call home. Thank you so much to all of you. We really appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is phone number, last four digits, 4366. Mr. Davis?
Yes. I'm calling on behalf of a family-owned cheesecake business in Del Paso Heights. And as I look at number 14, it definitely has my attention because it was marked as city manager ARPA funding grant agreement for small business priorities. That's a great, long phrase, and I would like for someone in the city manager's office to explain exactly will that apply to Del Paso Heights. I'm not talking about North Sacramento. I'm not talking about anything else in District 2. I'm asking, is that... Will they go on record and say that will apply to Del Paso Heights businesses and nonprofits? Because there's a lot of them, starting with us. I only speak for us. They have to have courage to speak for themselves. But that's a very vague phrase. I mean, I just listened to the downtown and the River District. You know, they said they've been meeting with you regularly. Well, I haven't been able to get a meeting or a response to two sets of paperwork I submitted. So I'd like to see someone, preferably the city manager, explain what does 14... Does that apply to Del Paso Heights or just District 2?
It's... Well, it's Del Paso... You're talking about Del Paso Boulevard? $5 million for Del Paso Boulevard and Marysville Boulevard. Councilmember Laloe is putting together a strategic investment plan, and we'll bring that back to the city council. Okay, next caller, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Okay. Then let's take a vote, please. Call the roll on items 1 through 14.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gera is absent. Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Can I get a motion, please? I would ask council... That passes 9-0. I'd ask Councilmembers Chenier and Valenzuela, please leave the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, they can just state the recusing on the item.
Okay, well, I just... Okay. They're not part of this item. Take a motion and a second on item... On item 15.
Rick, you want to...
I will move the item, Mayor.
I'll second it for him, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Call the roll, please. Absence Chenier and Valenzuela.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gera is absent. Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
And for the record...
All right, that passes.
Yeah, for the record, Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Chenier are recused from this item.
Right. The item passes 6 to 0. All right, let's move now to the public hearings. Item 16.
Yeah, Mayor, this is mine. I'm happy to waive the presentation, say thank you to the folks who live on Montgomery who've worked very hard to make this happen, and open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Second. Okay. Moved and seconded. Any public testimony?
I have no hands raised to make comment on this item.
Okay, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gera is absent. Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, that passes 9-0.
And Mayor, if I could just want to thank staff and Sean as well. There's a lot of work that's gone into this, so I want to appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Item 17.
Mayor, I'm likewise happy to waive the presentation and thank staff and open and close the public hearing to move the item forward.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. Do we have public testimony?
Jennings will second it.
I have no... I have no hands raised to make comments on this item.
Okay, then let us... Let's call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gera is absent. Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, members, we get to the part of tonight's meeting, and this is a workshop. And without objection, we're going to combine items 18 and 19. I'd like to make some opening remarks and then turn it over to Jennifer Venema, our climate lead update. Members, at this dais and throughout our city, we necessarily talk a lot about housing and homelessness. We need to spend as much or more time on climate and what we as a city can do to be not just a part of the solution, but to be leading on the solutions. We are the capital city of the state of California, the state that pioneered SB 32 and SB 375 and many other progressive climate measures. As you know, you have already taken significant amount of action to lay a foundation for the city to be a state and a national leader. We formed the Climate Commission back in calendar year 2018, and they put forward a number of very important and very far-reaching proposals, some of which we have begun to implement. We passed a climate emergency declaration in December of 2019. We elevated our city's climate efforts by calling for the designation of a city staff lead for climate action. That's Jennifer Venema. The city manager has since established Sacramento's first Office of Climate Action and Sustainability. We've put forward a number of new positions. We've allocated $4.4 million from the city council on fiscal year 2021 mid-year budget, which catalyzed a lot of the work. And of course, on April 20th of last year, 2021, we passed the EV infrastructure charging ordinance. And on June 1st of 2021, we passed the new building electrification ordinance. That is the start. But here's the truth. 56% of our climate challenge is derived from transportation. And while electrification is the aspiration and a big part of our solution set, it is not everything. Because it does not substitute for how we choose to build, whether we choose to build with greater density, with co-locating, retail housing, and office buildings. It does not speak to how we build and construct our streets in a way that makes them safer, that allow people to walk and to bike without fear of being injured or killed, and in a way that improves our climate. And so tonight is the first of several workshops where I want to devote considerable council time in workshop format to really dissect what it is going to take for our city to implement a bold climate action plan, not just in theory, not just as part of our general plan, but with action. We have aspired to carbon neutrality no later than 2045, but the community, especially young people, are pushing us to reach that goal much earlier, as early as 2030. And we ought to be doing everything in our power to try to make that goal a reality. So tonight, we focus on transportation. You're going to hear from state and national leaders. You're going to hear from local leaders. And then we're going to talk about seven, and maybe more than seven, bold ideas that could form the basis for how we accomplish our aspiration. There are going to be some heavy price tags here. And I would just say from the beginning, while cost, of course, matters, and while we can only build what we can ultimately pay for, that we have more tools than we've ever had before. Unprecedented amounts of federal money that we're very competitive for, unprecedented amounts of state money, which we're highly competitive for, and local tools that we are just beginning to understand around how to finance infrastructure in a more comprehensive way in our city. More on that in the weeks and the months ahead. But let's envision tonight what is possible and then figure out how to chip away at it and actually call ourselves with pride one of the country's leading cities combating the climate crisis. I'm going to begin here with Jennifer Venema to take us through the beginning here and how this tonight's workshop fits into our overall climate implementation work plan. Jennifer, I want to thank you, by the way, as well as Nicole Quayre of my staff, and Jennifer Donnell Wyatt, who you'll hear from, and so many leaders within the city that have worked hard to put tonight's workshop together and who are working every day to make our city proud. Jennifer?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Very pleased to be here tonight. Mr. Mayor, there's a great introduction. You've gone through a lot of what I wanted to cover to introduce that.
I'm sorry.
It was perfect. I'll be pretty brief. And as the mayor outlined, we have a big discussion ahead of us tonight. So first, we're just going to provide a brief update with where we're at for the status of implementation. As the mayor mentioned, I'm Jennifer Venema, the city's climate action lead. So before we jump into what's ahead, really quick, we'll provide a recap of what we've accomplished for the first full year of implementing the climate work plan and what's ahead of us. So this is the climate context. As the mayor noted, transportation is the biggest contributor of our local greenhouse gas emissions, over half. And you can see the other main sectors in bright colors here. We are doing a lot on transportation, but we've also been busy, as the mayor described, tackling some of these other emission sources. With council's leadership and the one-time $4.4 million commitment, we've been able to match that. Working with state, regional partners, we've been able to bring in over $4.7 million in addition for the climate priorities in our work plan. To do the work, it's been very collaborative. Our Office of Climate Action and Sustainability is just two staff, and we work very collaboratively with our colleagues across the city departments to deliver the work. As you can see in more detail in attachment 2 for this item, we've completed 10 items from the work plan. 35 more items are either in progress or with planning underway, and more work remains ahead. But to recap very briefly before we dig into the transportation detail, we have a lot of these other efforts ongoing. First, we've been very busy supporting the nuts and bolts of how we internalize work in city operations, working with public works and other departments, looking at how we increase the electric city fleet to kickstarting how we plan for retrofits to city buildings. In addition, we've implemented council's direction to take bold steps for environmental justice. Our team worked with Climate Plan to launch the EJ Collaborative Governance Committee, a community-based effort recommended by the mayor's climate commission and prioritized. And Nayla Pope-Harden is leading this work, and you'll be hearing more from her in just a little bit tonight. Also, we've been working to advance food access and resiliency, supporting the US EPA Local Food Access multilingual workshops led by the mayor's office. This workshop series brought together many stakeholders, and we've worked with economic development to secure funding for food and ag projects like the partnership with Planting Justice and Three Sisters Gardens, and as you can see, Councilmember Chenier at the former city tree nursery. A lot of great work there. And partnerships extended into all aspects of transportation. City fundings continue to support SACRT's ride-free pro... City fundings continue to support SACRT's ride-free program. Plus, we're partners for our community car share, as well as the largest free-floating EV car share program in the nation. That's Gig Car Share. You can see that on the screen in the top right. And we're supporting working with economic development to convene the Clean and Green Workshop Discussion Series, and there's analysis in process of really cutting-edge job skills and placement opportunities, and that work is ongoing. And very importantly, we've advanced the high-level policy direction from council for broader change, working with community development. This involves delivering on council's direction to require new buildings to be all-electric as we plan for a just transition to existing buildings. So operating at all of these levels from projects to capacity building to partnerships, we're moving fast and really trying to focus on where the city has the biggest impact. This involves providing regional leadership, working with partner agencies and organizations to share resources. We have one regional MOU in place for mobility, zero emission work, and we're working on a second for building electrification. So moving ahead, next year, our work is going to fall primarily in these three buckets, as shown in attachment three. First, we're getting more internal work underway to build the systems and processes for sustained progress. Second, we're focusing on partnership and capacity building for bigger impact. More outreach will also launch with the forthcoming Climate Action Plan. Lastly, a number of strategic efforts are ongoing, and you'll be hearing from more from us more as we move ahead. But first, as the mayor said, tonight, we're having a focused discussion on transportation and the role this plays. Secondly, we're preparing for that second workshop that the mayor mentioned, where we'll talk more broadly about other accelerated climate options beyond transportation. It's so complicated, we're taking these in two chunks. So there is more to come, and with that, Mr. Mayor, I will transition it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you very, very much for all the hard work and for that foundation. Let me turn it to Ryan Moore, our Director of Public Works for an opening too, and I think it's really important that the Director of Public Works is leading on this because, you know, public works used to not be thought of, maybe unfairly, but but stereotypically as not green. And now you got the director here helping lead on on climate, and I think that's significant, and we embrace it, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As the mayor said, I'm Ryan Moore. I'm the Director of Public Works, and I'll follow suit with Jennifer and thank the mayor. I think you have stolen a lot of our thunder here tonight, but that's
I didn't mean to.
Fantastic to have our 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 mayor be such a champion for this important topic. I do want to thank the entire council for our commitment to this topic and also specifically to the mayor for your convening of the Climate Commission. Happy to be part of a newer, greener Public Works team. We are delighted tonight to have the opportunity to talk about this important topic through this workshop and really to get into how deeply important this subject is to our whole city and our department in particular. As we realize and recognize tonight the role of transportation in greenhouse gas emissions, and are really looking forward to talking a little bit about, we see ourselves at a turning point in terms of the way we prioritize investment in transportation and transportation infrastructure. One thing that we are working on doggedly right now is a new transportation priorities plan, which will put a better policy framework away around the way that investment happens, continuing to focus on our historic priorities, our current priorities of maintenance and traffic safety, but also building on priorities, critically important priorities of climate change, greenhouse gas elimination and equity, of course. So we also want to see that look at this vital part of that, the deepening of our partnership with Sacramento RT and other regional partners. So the objectives tonight for our workshop, we want to talk about the, obviously, the profound effect that the transportation sector has on greenhouse gas emissions and begin to create a framework for what we can do here in Sacramento to begin to address these issues, both as a city and as the largest city within our region. So with that, I want to introduce the the real expert and the real superstar here on our team, and that's Jennifer Donald Wyatt, who managed our our transportation planning group. Lifelong career transportation planner, consummate professional, as you all know. And Jennifer is going to lead our presentation tonight. Jennifer, you want to take it?
Great. Thank you so much, Ryan. Mayor, Council, it is wonderful to be be before you tonight to talk about this important topic. Now, you know that transportation is important to our communities. In fact, it's foundational to our communities so much that it's actually a driver, if I may use that term, for community growth, joy, and well-being. Transportation supports our community and personal health by providing ways for folks to be active, to get around Sacramento. This, for example, is the Jack Rabbit Trail in North Thomas. It's a well-used, shared-use path. Hold on one second. I have lost all of you. There we go. It's a well-used, shared-use path in North Thomas. Vice Mayor Ashby knows it well. And not only provides recreational opportunities, but it connects folks to local businesses, to jobs. It's the type of transportation facility that serves people of all ages and all abilities. You can walk here if you're eighty, or you can bike to school here if you're eight. In fact, transportation connects our youth to education and after-school activities. It connects adults to continuing education, and it connects our older folks to ongoing enrichment, and it helps us reach our dreams. Our dreams may be owning a local business. Transportation supports our local economy by bringing goods to stock shelves, customers to businesses, and employees to their jobs. Our local businesses are institution in our community, just like Odo's here that just celebrated its fifty-year anniversary, and is an integral part of the community. And it supports our ability to get our jobs, to bring in income and support our families, and hopefully have some fun while we're at work. And speaking of having fun while we're doing stuff, transportation brings us together. It brings our family and friends together, whether it's visiting our grandparents or aunties, meeting with friends at the park, going to watch your child play soccer. It brings us together. And what can be more beautiful than that? However, we're at a pivotal moment in time. We are, and what the United Nations is calling Code Red for Humanity. The newest science tells us that we have less than ten years to make a drastic cut in our greenhouse gas emissions. By two thousand and thirty, we need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions in half to avert the worst of climate change, and that's why it's called Code Red. And what we do now matters, because even if all emissions were eliminated now, it would take twenty to thirty years for the climate to stabilize. So I think we've covered this a little bit tonight, but I want to reiterate that Sacramento's greenhouse gas emissions essentially come from two places. The first is energy for our buildings, residential, commercial, and industrial, and that's why we're doing all the great work to electrify buildings. But by far, the biggest contributor to climate change is transportation, producing fifty-six percent of the city's greenhouse gas emissions. And there's urgency in moving fast in transportation, not only because it's the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions, but it generally takes fifteen years from project planning to construction, and that timeline makes it difficult for us to move quickly. Sacramento continues to be one of the most polluted areas in America. We are the sixth worst master reason for ozone in the nation. We cannot achieve our climate goals without making changes into how people travel, and we need to take new approaches to transportation. So there are two ways that we can reduce greenhouse gases from transportation. The first is to reduce how much we drive. And we can achieve this in a few ways, such as infill, and we're doing a great job on infill. But we still need a transportation network that supports sustainable transportation, such as active transportation and transit. Reducing our driving also helps with some of our other goals like Vision Zero. Sacramento continues to rank as one of the worst cities for traffic safety in California. And then equity, by making driving trips shorter or shifting them to transit or active transportation, we can lower the financial impacts of transportation. The cost to own and operate a car, own, operate, maintain, and insure a car is about ten thousand dollars a year, according to the federal government. And the median household income in Sacramento is sixty-two thousand dollars a year. So for our residents, owning one car could cost twenty percent of your family income. We know not everyone will be able to walk, bike, and take transit for all your trips, and some folks will still drive. And that's okay. In the work that we're doing for the forthcoming Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, we expect that seventy percent of our trips will still be driving. And for those, our goal is to shift those those car trips to electric vehicles. Reducing greenhouse gas emissions is not something new to transportation, and we've invited a few speakers, guest speakers, who've led transformative efforts in our own city. The first with us tonight is Sam Zimbabwe. Sam is the former director of the Seattle Department of Transportation, where he led teams and programs and did work like neighborhood greenways and transit collaboration and safe routes to school. Prior to his time in Seattle, he spent over seven years in leadership positions at DDOT, which is the District Department of Transportation in Washington, DC. Sam, thank you so much for joining us today, and the presentation is yours.
Great. Thanks, Jennifer, and thanks, Mayor Steinberg, council members, everybody for for having me. It's really great to join you from just a little bit farther north than you. I will try to run through fairly quickly so we get into the conversation, but I wanted to set the stage a little bit and talk a little bit about what we've done in Seattle and what lessons it might have for for folks in Sacramento. So you can go on to the next slide. And I'll just just tell you to tell you what I'm going to tell you. You know, we we heard already from from Jennifer and from Ryan, from other folks about what we're doing, which is making cities for people and communities. And that also has the benefit of having of reducing climate emissions from transportation. We also know we also know what works. It doesn't mean there won't be hard choices, and there's a lot of hard choices ahead in terms of addressing this emergency. There's going to be lots of lots of things that are needed. It's important to measure the progress that you're making, and there's, as we've heard already, there's an urgent need for continued action. So you can go on to the next slide. I wanted to set a little bit of context, because Sacramento was not Seattle. But Seattle wasn't Seattle until it was Seattle either, and we made a series of decisions here in in Seattle that led to a very auto-dominated environment by the nineteen eighties. We went from a people-dominated environment to building major freeways through the heart of the city with real impacts on communities of color in particular. And we have some very similar experiences with with transit over the last century, where we had rich transit systems that then were disinvested, lost, and now we're trying to rebuild those systems as well. Sacramento and Seattle have a very similar population trajectory, too. That's the very, that's the most simple superficial way to compare cities, but you can see that the growth trajectories there are almost exactly the same over over the last half-century even more. So even though Seattle and Sacramento aren't the same place, I think there's a lot of applicable lessons from what we have learned and done over the last period of time that can be instructive as as you all are doing this work, too. You can go on to the next slide. You know, we're talking about a whole number of things that work. There's everything from planning to projects to the programmatic approaches to 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 lowering greenhouse gas emissions. And those are all interrelated, and they all work together and need to work and communicate together as well. So you can go on to the next slide. I'm going to talk first about plans and projects. So Seattle completed a Transit Master Plan in two thousand and twelve, updated that in two thousand and sixteen, and that laid out really a surface transportation plan, series of corridors to really focus on transit investments and transit improvements that started with some bootstrapped rapid-ride corridors, as we call them. They're like BRT, Bus Rapid Transit, but they were pretty small-scale improvements to transit stops, some transit-only lanes, things like that. Those then, and that has grown into a series of corridors and major investments. We're now in the in the midst of construction on the largest of those investments are Madison Bus Rapid Transit Project, which is over a hundred-million-dollar project funded in large part by a federal small starts grant from the Federal Transit Administration. All of these projects have taken partnership at the city, county, state, and federal level to make sure that they're delivering high-quality transit service in this network of corridors that really stretches across the whole city and reaches out into the the broader region. And we can come, I can come back and talk a little bit more about how we've measured some of the progress we've made on on these, but this this represents a really substantial investment in transit infrastructure in partnership with our transit agency. You can go on to the next slide. I'll talk a little bit about some of our bike projects and pedestrian projects as well. City adopted a bicycle master plan in two thousand and fourteen that identified a critical network across the whole of the city, but really focused on on some key connections downtown, on reallocating road space from cars to people biking in in safe and protected environments. Those are not exclusively downtown, though. Those reach out into into neighborhoods, connecting people to schools, to parks, to neighborhood commercial districts. And we rapidly expanded that during the pandemic with what we called Stay Healthy Streets. I think you have something very similar that built on that existing network to really make a connected connected network overall. Some of these projects are pretty costly, and some of them we've been able to do on a on a smaller budget. Really, when we, when they are more costly, they're about making that higher level of protection and making them safe for people of all ages and abilities, where people can really make make really make the bicycle infrastructure feel accessible to them, no matter who they are and their experience riding a bike in the city. You can go on to the next slide. So, you know, beyond this, there's programs and there's policies that are that are that we put in place to start with figuring out what works at a small scale and then scaling those up to citywide solutions. So in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, we reduced the speed limit on ninety percent of the arterials around the city to twenty-five miles an hour. We know that slower speeds have better safety outcomes. They make it more comfortable to walk, to bike, even to take transit. And they are part of building that overall low-carbon transportation system. We also retimed a number of our traffic signals to be pedestrian-first, so pedestrians get a small head start at the intersection. Those are also called leading pedestrian intervals. We went from doing those at a very small scale to really rapidly expanding that as a as a way to address one of the most common causes of pedestrian crashes, which is actually turning movements on a green green signal. So people get a little bit of a head start, makes the intersection a lot more comfortable for pedestrians. We've been rapidly expanding our ADA ramps and our sidewalk construction around the city. We still have too many parts of the city here that don't have sidewalks at all. And then we've invested in urban forestry and making trees and a tree canopy that supports a comfortable walking environment as well. So all of these work together to make a more people-focused city. They help people walk and bike and take transit for their normal daily needs. They make it more comfortable, and so not everything has to be a large, discreet capital infrastructure project. There can be programmatic things that you do across the city. I'm going to the next slide. And I think the other part of this is making the city more affordable and accessible. I know you all have low-cost transit and free transit for for students. We've done that with some of our senior population, some of our essential workers during the pandemic. We extended that to some some in a pilot program, some retail or restaurant and grocery workers that had to report during during work during the pandemic. We saw strong transit ridership throughout and wanted to get free transit for some of those folks as well. And then looking at how we extend shared mobility, bike share, car share, and looking at equity and ways to make sure that it's not just accessible, but really people have a deep opportunity to access those and utilize those shared mobility solutions. All right, what does this all sort of look like? You can go to the next slide, talk a little about what progress starts to look like. So in that Transit Master Plan that I talked about, we set a goal of expanding who has access to you know, the number of households with access to very frequent transit, which is ten-minute service all day. And through a series of those capital investments in those transit corridors and in service investments, we've we grew that from only twenty-five percent of households in the city in two thousand and fifteen to seventy percent by two thousand and nineteen. So that rapid expansion is what really starts to make transit service accessible and part of people's daily life. We saw that really start to change in how people were getting to and from downtown. The city does a mode-split survey, asking people, commuters, how they get to downtown. And in the last decade, we saw a really rapid change in how people were getting to downtown, lower single-occupancy vehicle numbers, higher transit ridership, higher walking, higher biking. And, you know, some of this has changed during the pandemic, but actually, people accessing downtown jobs have continued to to take transit quite a bit. We've just had a lot fewer people accessing those those downtown jobs. You can keep going as well. It also, beyond the sort of numbers, it also looks like bringing those people back to the to these streets that we're making. So making streets that are valuable to people, no matter how they how they choose to get around and and sort of going back in history. and, and sort of going back in history to making people first cities as well. You can go on to the next slide. I'll talk a little bit more numbers. I won't get into too much detail because I know we're running late here. But we track a whole bunch of different things, transit ridership, regular accounts of people walking, people biking, and that holds ourselves accountable. So if we're not making progress, if we're not doing things that we think we're, the outcomes that we're going to get, it helps us pivot and make changes as well. You know, we've had a lot, last few years have been really bad here in terms of fatalities in our transportation system. We had deadliest year in 15 years on the streets. Last year we had 31 fatalities. So even as we're making some of these investments, we know there's more and that's really triggering a conversation about what more needs to be done in terms of making a safe system as well. You can keep going. I wanted to, you know, there's been a long history. I don't want to make it sound like it's always been easy. There's been an ongoing debate here in Seattle about how to fund the needs that the transportation system has. We use a variety of different approaches. Sometimes those fail before they pass. So those arrows are direct, direct connections between ballot measure that lost and then one that, that passed. And that's been everything from regional light rail to sales tax for transit service. I will say that the trajectory of this has been very positive. There's a lot of voter support here. In 2020, that Seattle Prop 1 renewal, that is our, our local, it's a 0.15% sales tax. And we actually raised the sales tax in the midst of the pandemic and the economic uncertainty that we had in 2020. People voted overwhelmingly to renew that transit service so we could continue to buy additional service on the streets of Seattle. You can go on to the next slide and I'm almost done. So, you know, I want to leave with the, you know, we're making progress. We are, we are, all of these things are building towards progress. We're driving down the greenhouse gas emissions in, in Seattle. We also need to do more. And so even though we are being, we are seeing the success, we know there's also more that we need to do. So we are in a conversation, the city is starting this conversation now about what the next generation of investments that will be needed to achieve this goal and get to a really aggressive emissions reduction. Seattle is very similar to Sacramento in that the largest sector of greenhouse gas emissions now is from transportation. And really one of the stickiest due to drive down because it takes a lot of public investment and it takes a lot of changes in behavior and, and different decisions on, on an individual and community wide basis as well. So I'll stop there. I know we're going to have some other speakers and then some time for questions and answers, which I will stay for. Happy to take any clarifying questions if folks want right now.
Sure. Well, your, your schedule, I appreciate you as a very busy person here. Do you mind hearing the local panelists, then we come back to questions?
That, that is totally fine. I'm happy, I'm happy to say.
Okay, we really, really appreciate it. Let me now introduce our local panelists to take a few minutes here and then and then we will hear from Jeff Tumlin from San Francisco. And then we are going to open it up, Q and A for both Sam and Jeff and any of our local panelists. So Nailah, Nailah Pope Harden, of course, is the Executive Director of Climate Plan and a community organizer in South Sacramento. She has years of community organizing experience that spans the neighborhood, regional, state, national justice campaigns. All of her work is rooted in ensuring that her son has a cleaner, safer and healthier future. Henry Lee, of course, became the CEO of Sacramento Regional Transit in 2016 and immediately infused the agency with his can do spirit. And I, I think it is, it is right to say that Henry Lee and the board, but Henry Lee's vision and energy has done more to improve the regional transit system in, in ways that led to being named the CEO of the year in 2019. And he certainly understands the nexus between building out transit and climate change. Of course, James Corliss, another leader in our community. We got him from Washington DC, he's the executive director, he is the Executive Director of SECOG, our regional government, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, and created the Green Means Go Program to accelerate infill development for the Sacramento region. SECOG is in charge of implementing SB 375 through its blueprint. His work has led to over a billion dollars in state funding for local transportation projects, civic labs, so much more. A national leader here in our backyard. And Anne Stauschall, who chaired the mayor's climate commission, 19 members, with broad community representation issued their final visionary report in June of 2020. Anne has had a distinguished career, including leading our public retirement system here in California for years. When Purves engaged deeply in the climate issue, she previously chaired Seres, a national nonprofit focused on addressing climate and sustainability through the financial markets. Let me turn it over to our local panel for a few minutes each and begin with Nailah and go from there. Welcome to all of you and thank you for your time.
All right, and thank you for having me. Nailah Pope Harden, I am the Executive Director of Climate Plan. Climate Plan is a statewide network of about 60 organizations that work across the state that work at the intersections of transportation, land use, housing and environmental justice. We, one of the main things that we do is make sure that the state's spending align with our climate goals. And we were actually born out of SB 375 and have been tracking it ever since. I also am a community leader in South Sacramento with the Avondale Glen elders neighborhood, a product of SAC City Unified School District, a SAC State alumni. I love Sacramento through and through. And so I'm going to use the James Baldwin quote really quick. I'm going to reshape it. I love Sacramento more than any other city in this world. And exactly for that reason, I insist on the right to criticize her perpetually. And it's one of the reasons I'm an organizer is because I believe in this city. And as a product of South Sacramento, I've seen the worst of this city, parts of the worst of this city. And through life experience, I've been able to see part of the best of the city. Most of the organizing work that I've done has actually led me to do transportation justice organizing. So ensuring that communities have access to transit and multimodal options. And that also bleeds into a lot of the work that I do at Climate Plan, ensuring that communities have those same options. I also was able to serve on the Climate Commission. And now I currently facilitate the Environmental Justice Collaborative Governance Committee. When I was thinking about this panel and what to talk about and just the impact of transportation specific to Sacramento, I was thinking about all the things I was able to like personally accomplish in my life and how the idea that so many of those things were colored by how I would get there. So it wasn't about whether I earned it. It wasn't about whether it was merit. It was about how we would physically get my body from South Sacramento outside of my neighborhood that didn't have opportunities to another part of the city. So transportation was always this looming shadowing figure for any opportunity. I went to Southern Middle School in Midtown and had to wake up and be at a bus stop at 6:20. And it was infuriating to know that many of my peers were still asleep at that time. I went to West Campus and so I had many a days where I was running across Fruit Ridge to make sure that I caught a bus home on time. When I was pregnant, I was working downtown and I loved grabbing jump bikes and driving and going from office to office when I was working. So much of transportation and so many of the conversations I have statewide with communities, disadvantaged communities, frontline communities, the hood, whatever you want to use to describe them. So many people in the communities have similar experiences to me where so much of the opportunities and access were afforded is colored by transportation and our transportation options. So what I think about, one of the things that I love about doing transportation organizing and just climate organizing is a lot of people like to talk about the science of it, the PM 2.5, the infill development, the carbon sequestration and all of that really wonky, heady science stuff, which is all like great and dandy and it has its place, but that's not me. The most beautiful thing about doing climate change policy and climate justice work is about reconnecting communities. And so that's something that I really just want to highlight here is, is we can get bogged down in the numbers and the percentage of VMT we want to reduce or emissions where emissions reductions, we can get into the weeds about all of that. But what we're really talking about and what's at stake in these conversations are like better designed communities so that people can cross the street safely. Like genuinely just cross the street safely. That's what we're talking about here. What we're talking about is like more trees being planted in communities so that when people are walking, they, the heat island is reduced, the communities are cooler and it's just safer and more comfortable to walk in. What we're talking about, and this one I take really personally, is children being able to like sleep in later so they don't have to be at a bus stop at 6:20 in the morning every day at age 12 and 13. Pretty frustrating. So as we move through this conversation, I think one of the main things that I kind of just want to emphasize is it's while bold is the word that we're using, bold is the minimum that's required here. Like there's no reason why we should leave this meeting without a commitment for bold. We can argue about what bold, what the first bold action is or how bold we're going. But bold is the bare minimum, especially for frontline communities in Sacramento. And I just really want to urge you guys, as I pass the, the mic to my fellow commissioners that served on the Climate Commission with me, that we really are taking an honest look about what are some bold fixes? How can we really advance active transportation, multimodal options, community greening and all the things that we need for our transportation system to be equitable, but also to reduce our emissions and reduce VMT? And I want to be honest with you guys, I feel a little cynical about this because I, I believe that every council member understands how pressing climate change is. And it, and it's a little infuriating that we are having these conversations about, you know, whether we're going to take bold action and not what the bold action is. So I just really want to press upon you guys, there's, we don't really have the opportunity to wait. So thank you so much for your time. I greatly appreciate speaking to you guys tonight.
Thank you so much.
Henry, Henry Lee, go, go.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Without, without a doubt, we need a fundamental transportation mode shift from cars to public transit. And if we ever want to, you know, going to meet our climate goals, we need to increase our transit mode share from currently 3% to 10% or even 15% with equitable service. Thanks to the inspirational speech presentation from Sam, Mr. Sam Zemberway and later to listen to Mr. Jeff Chiumini. We can imagine that a significant mode shift in Sacramento region is attainable if we work collaboratively around a shared vision for mobility, climate, social justice, economic development and equitable goals. As you know, slide two please. As you know, SACOT is the predominant public transportation agency in the six county region accounting for about 95% of passenger trips. We're in the forefront of the industry when it comes to piloting and implementing new innovative mobility solutions that will attract new riders. Many of our initiatives have been recognized by the industry culminating with SACOT receiving the most outstanding transit system of the year award in North America last year. And we first briefly highlight some of our projects and programs. Next slide please. Slide three, one of the most important sense we can do is integrate our service within the community and the region and make it easier to ride. We have done so through the regional integration and SACOT and Reging have made tremendous strides in lighting the regions, transit services to provide for more seamless connections and fair transfers. We have annexed transit service from the city of Elgro, Foson, Centresize, expand service to the city of Davis and Airport and is moving forward to extend line rail or streetcar to the city of West Sag. And through the regional service will become more efficient, more integrated and more competitive for the historical level of grant funding. Next slide please. We have needed the industry with our on-demand microtransit service, Smart Ride, which is one of the largest in the country and one of the most productive in the industry. We're now operating with over 45 vehicles, many which are zero emission. And this is an on-demand service with line zones, as you can see from the map, designed to serve areas lacking fixed route service, especially in disadvantaged communities. The service is very popular and provides regional service as well as grid collections to fixed routes, bus and line rail. Next slide please. Here about 10 years, all of SACOT's operation will be zero emission, up to 500 small and bigger buses. We currently operate over, over 25 electric buses and has aggressive fleet conversion plan that we hope to move forward very soon. You can move to the next slide. I would like to share a map of SACOT's existing service. As you can see, it is inadequate if we are ever truly going to realize a transit mode shift from currently 3% to 10 or even 15% with equitable service. And currently, we only have four routes with 15 minutes headways. And we need more service and more frequency. And we need to work with our partners to reduce travel times and transfers. Then from the next slide, you will see a network with 85% of service expansion. With this service scenario, we would have 23 routes with 15 minutes headways or better. And this map shows expansion to, of our line rail service to the airport in the south, in the north, Centresize in northeast and to Elgro in the south, which will be over $3 billion investment to our region with tens of thousands of new high paying union jobs. And also this map invasions that build out of a regional high capacity bus network, BRT, with dedicated bus net along Stockton Boulevard, Sunrise Boulevard, Florin Road and Wissing Downtown Core. I believe this is the network we should be advocating for, but we need to work collaboratively. We will work with the city to reimagine our existing right of ways, prioritize transit and active transportation and make this mode shifts a more attractive mobility option. Then from the slide eight, next slide, we can say, should this network become a reality? We will be making tremendous strides towards our climate goal. With service expanded by 85%, SACOT estimate we would experience approximately 22 million new rides annually. And this is equivalent to take approximately 15 million car trips off the road annually. And with 65, 56% of our regions' GHG emission generated by our transportation sector, we need to get the people to ride public transit. And we can, with this vision, we can reduce our greenhouse gas emission by millions of metric tons a year. So the final point, how to reach this exciting and ambitious goal? As we can see from the slide line, next slide, SACOT currently only receives 1/6 of 1 penny in local sales tax. A percentage that is far less than many of our peers, which are either receive a whole penny sales tax or even more. You know, Sam just showed in Seattle in many years, through many years, you know, transit received multiple sales tax or other, you know, tax revenues solely for transit. You know, transit received multiple sales tax or other, you know, tax revenues solely for transit. And uh which come together as multiple times more than us. So, should a local sales tax measure be successful later this year? Secati would receive over eighty million dollars annually and more than three-point-two billion dollars in next forty years. When you combine that with the new historical federal bipartisan infrastructure law. Which has increased transit funding by approximately sixty-three percent in the last five years. And also a historical level of state funding, we are truly at a magic moment. To improve the mobility in the Sacramento region. But we must have our local match first to secure majority of this federal and state funding. And we can secure. Three billion or even up to six billion dollars more state and federal fundings by leveraging a potential three billion dollars local funding. So we really need to be bold, innovative, and united. And we needed to propose projects that will seriously address climate, social justice, and equity issues. And this is a emergency, a climate emergency. We needed to act with a strong sense of urgency and determination. That is what I would like to share. Thank you.
All right, thank you. James?
All right, Mayor Steinberg, council members, thank you so much for having me this evening. I hope my internet holds up here. Um, look, I just want to thank your staff for putting this, uh, these, these, this document and these moves together. The, the, what you've got in front of you tonight with this um kind of suite of projects, it fits perfectly into our regional trails plan that we're building right now and our regional transit network. And it's got a very heavy emphasis on active transportation and bicycle pedestrian facilities, which I think is perfect. The uh, the bike share system uh that is up and running, um, a- as you know, between three cities, city of Sacramento, West Sacramento, and Davis. Second most popular bike share system in the entire Jump Uber uh Lime, Lime Bike uh system, second only to Paris when we had it up and running before COVID. So we are a very, very bike-friendly town and, and those projects are great projects to begin to truly complete this network. Uh, and really just talked about the opportunities around transit. Uh, we don't actually have a true rapid transit or bus rapid transit corridor in Stockton Boulevard, as your staff has pointed out, is the perfect place to start. High, high-frequency, most populous bus route, the number fifty-one in the city. Uh, let's make that a bus rapid transit corridor. So, so hats off to your staff, and I think this is a great place to start, but it's all about accelerating. And going to get funding to actually make this happen. Your, your staffer. Report mentions the infrastructure bill. Mr. Mayor, you talked about it too. Lots of people have talked about it. The money out of the infrastructure bill from Congress is not guaranteed. Some of it comes by formula to the state, some of it comes by formula to Seco, most of it stays with the U S Department of Transportation, and we have to compete. So that money's not guaranteed. And here's the formula for us competing. We've got to have a vision. Uh, we've got to have a trade, in this case, a trails and transit vision. Number two, we have to be very clear about. Climate benefits, greenhouse gas reductions, benefits to social and racial equity, and safety benefits. And finally, we've got to show real community engagement, especially from low-income communities and communities of color. There are two major grant programs that your staff uh has outlined in the memo that you have. I would say they are fantastic opportunities. The first is the base grant program. It's an annual grant program. Applications are due in April. Uh, you do, you, we do need to have, get that local match. The second, though, that I actually think is a fantastic opportunity is it's a brand-new program called the Safe Streets Program. It's all about safer streets in low-income communities and communities of color, where there are high crash uh and high fatality numbers. Sadly, we have those all over the city. That's an excellent opportunity for us. And finally, of course, we will be doing at the regional level at Seco, our own funding round coming up later this year in a number of categories. So it's all about competing. It's all about putting this together. I want to see us, I want to help you get these projects done. Again, my, my hats off to you for the workshop, for the staff work. Happy to pass it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, James. And last but not least, our climate commission chair, Anne Stasbol.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm going to speak bluntly because I know that all of you are dedicated in principle to modernizing our transportation infrastructure to support our climate response. But what needs to be said is that we are moving way too slowly and too tentatively. The city hasn't yet truly committed to the massive undertaking that's needed to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The seven proposals presented by city staff are called big ideas, but the reality is that they're baby steps. As in the past, we're leaving the big ideas to another day, and by that day, we may have lost our window of opportunity. Of course, I support the ideas, the dedicated bus lane, more bike lanes and traffic calming in the central city. And closing gaps in the bike trails. Let's do all of those things because they do point us in the right direction. But where is the response to the bold recommendations from the mayor's climate commission? Where are the timelines and accountability? Where's the focus on equity? Where's the funding? We can't rely on grants alone. And most importantly, where's the overall plan for the long haul? As any long-haul truck driver knows, a complicated journey like this requires fuel and a map. We need funding and an aggressive plan. I am very thankful for the work that has been done, and I especially want to highlight the outpouring of community support for this workshop. And the hope that the workshop generated among the community. The city has made a lot of progress on building electrification, but there's been little progress on transportation. Even though, as has been said, over half the emissions in Sacramento are caused by gas-powered vehicles. Our air is horrible with serious health impacts for our residents. We are nowhere close to meeting our climate goals, and we won't be until we take meaningful strides to get the gas-spewing cars off the road. Electric cars, where the city has done good work, are only one piece of the answer. It'll be decades before all the cars on the road are electric. The city has to commit to building an infrastructure designed for people, not cars. The top priority has to be on walking and biking, public transit and shared mobility, and then electrify the remaining vehicles. Sacramento is at a crossroads. Is it going to be the status quo? Or a clean, equitable, people-based transportation so the city can thrive? I thank you for what you have done, but we've barely glimpsed the beginning of a plan, and we are way behind schedule. Thank you.
So, um, I appreciate the challenge and really, and that's completely appropriate. Viela and everybody else. I mean, uh, because we're far behind, not just as a city, as a, as a society. Uh, and so that is an appropriate call to action. I will point out, however. That this, as Councilmember Valenzuela reminded me, that tonight is not a complete uh recitation of. Our work on this. This is a transportation workshop. Uh, we are going to have another workshop in the next couple of weeks in which we are going to actually. Ask and answer what it would take to meet the twenty-thirty and the twenty-forty-five goals and actually put dollars to uh to those scenarios. And so that will be a second opportunity in a couple of weeks. Uh, to be able to actually see what the challenge and what the gap is and how we're going to meet it. So. Uh, keep challenging us because uh that's exactly what it's going to take. All right, let us hear from uh Jeff Tumlin. Do you want to introduce uh Jeff, please, Jennifer? Go ahead.
I'm more than happy to. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to introduce everybody to Jeff Tumlin. Uh, Director Tumlin is the director of the San Francisco M T A. It's an organization in San Francisco that oversees the transit. Traffic safety, the streets, walking, biking, the whole suite of things that happen around mobility in the city of San Francisco. And before Jeff joined the city of San Francisco, he was the interim director for the first ever, the brand-new Oakland Department of Transportation. And before that, he was a, a high-level consultant with Nelson Nygaard. So I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Jeff and introduce him to everybody. Jeff?
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here, uh, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. Also, Mayor Steinberg, um, personal thank you for S B seven forty-three. Uh, yes. San Francisco would not be able to be doing any of its good work without that. Um, so let me bring up my screen and I will share some slides with you quickly. Hopefully you can see that now.
Yes.
All right, little slow. There we go. Okay. Um, as Jennifer already mentioned, the S F M T A is an unusual organization in that we are both the municipal transportation. And the region's largest transit operators. We run Muni, uh, and we run all the streets. Um, and that gives us some um interesting strengths, but also some challenges. Um, we've also, uh, because we are an older, more transit-oriented city, um, we have one of the better mode shares in California. Um, with about half of our trips being taken by walking or transit, you can see in green. But our motor has been stubbornly steady. Uh, we've made hardly any progress on expanding walking, biking, and transatlization in San Francisco, at least through two thousand nineteen. Um, although, of course, a lot has changed in the last three years. Uh, we also, like most other cities in California, uh, about half of San Francisco's greenhouse gas emissions come from the transport sector. Um, and those emissions um have also stayed completely steady over time. It's shown there in dark blue. Um, San Francisco has made incredible progress on cleaning up its fuel mix for buildings and building efficiency. Um, through very expensive and bold political change, um, we have not gotten the same political support for changes to the mobility sector. Um, and to the extent that we have had regulatory change in transit, it's been focused on cleaning up transit. Um, and Muni is already the greenest fleet in North America, and it represents zero-point-zero-two percent of San Francisco's greenhouse gas emissions. The vast majority of San Francisco's uh greenhouse gas emissions, uh, the largest share of them comes from uh personal driving. Uh, and this, again, is uh, uh, common throughout California. And so the solution for dealing with greenhouse gas emissions in a city like San Francisco, there's, there's no silver bullet. Um, and while electrification is definitely part of the mix, we have no hope of meeting. Uh, a greenhouse gas emissions reduction schedule that relies on electrification. We have no hope of meeting that in time to save coastal cities. In order to actually meet our uh goals, we need to do everything all at once, and we need to do it now. And we need to focus on all modes of transportation, particularly the modes of transportation that make the most efficient use of public space. As well as reduce greenhouse gas emissions on a per-mile basis. Um, and one of the things that's very interesting to us about measures that focus on increasing rates of walking or biking or transit. Is that in addition to reducing greenhouse gas emissions, these measures also have tremendous co-benefits when it comes to. Air quality or equity or economic vitality or safety. If we can shift folks to walking, biking, and transit, we can clean up the air. We can improve access to employment for our lowest-income residents. And we can also get people healthier, um, significantly saving on our public healthcare costs um for the county um uh health system. Um, so in order to do all that, um, we have been focused on a hundred small projects. Um, among the projects that have been most successful for us, particularly during COVID, um, have been our investment in protected bikeways, as well as our slow-street program. Um, we've built just over twenty miles of protected bikeways over the last two years. Um, and we created forty-five miles of slow streets um in San Francisco during COVID. Um, we're one of the few cities in California that is not only holding on to our slow-street network, but actually expanding. Because we discovered that slow streets were the most cost-effective investment we have ever made. In creating mode shift and reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the transport sector. And remarkably, slow streets are one of the few things that we've ever done that has attracted the broadest array of city demographics. Uh, they have invited people of all ages, abilities, ethnicities, incomes. Uh, and uh gotten people out on scooters and bikes in neighborhoods that we had never expected uh would be possible. Um, and so that network uh is being significantly expanded, and we're going to keep pulling uh these dark green lines together. So that uh one can travel comfortably on a scooter or skateboard or wheelchair from any neighborhood in San Francisco to any other neighborhood. Um, and in order to do this, um, we have nearly given up on big capital projects. We're investing all of our work in what we call quick build, where we're using simple, cheap materials like plastic posts and paint. Uh, which we can deliver quickly and which are a fundamental component of the community engagement process. San Franciscans hate change, and it's hard for us to imagine change making our neighborhoods better. So in order to actually help our residents think about change, we're actually doing live experimentation in their streets. And making adjustments based upon real-time community feedback. Once our temporary projects um meet community acceptance, we then seek funding uh for permanent installation, but not until we've actually experimented. Um, we're also working really hard to uh keep our buses from being stuck in congestion. Um, during COVID, um, we added ten miles to the city's uh transit-only lane network and dramatically expanded um our red transit-only lanes. Um, these facilities have improved transit speed reliability by over twenty percent in some corridors. Um, we've also included California's first urban street high occupancy vehicle lanes on U S one oh one on Lombard Street. And on California Highway One, um, starting, um, hopefully next month on Burke Presidio, and then later again on Nineteenth Avenue. Um, we've been uh finding Caltrans to be actually one of the most useful partners in helping us use the state transportation network. In order to prioritize moving more people and goods rather than simply moving more cars. We also know that ultimately, the only way for us to deal with congestion um is through pricing. Congestion is simply what happens when the demand for mobility equals the supply. We've learned again and again that we can't solve congestion by adding traffic lanes. We can only use the same tool that we use for every other commodity in American society, which is price. Price balances supply and demand, and through pricing, we can also have a tool for helping to manage the mobility system to minimize greenhouse gas emissions. And to make sure that transit and high occupancy vehicles are never stuck in congestion. Of course, will also be one of the most controversial things that we could ever possibly do in our current downtown congestion management uh project is on pause. As we wait for um some additional recovery of the city's economy. We also know that parking is an essential part of managing greenhouse gas emissions and making the city more efficient. Uh, long ago, we eliminated all minimum parking requirements from the city zoning codes. We've also been managing the city's on-street parking and parking garages to make sure that all parking garages and every block of on-street parking. Uh, that motorists can always find a parking space, uh, no matter what time of day uh or night. Uh, and we do that through pricing. The right price for parking is always the lowest price that ensures one or two parking spaces are always available. This is also the price that maximizes uh economic return, uh, small business success, and minimizes greenhouse gas emissions. And one could argue, actually, the most important transportation issue in California is housing. Uh, this is a, uh, issue that is particularly challenging to San Francisco, uh, but it is at the core of our work. To make the transportation system more efficient and to make sure um that we're not um having to solve for our inability to build housing. Um, by forcing people to drive ever longer distances in order to find housing that is affordable to them. By shrinking the distances people need to travel, uh, that is one of the ways, in fact, the most effective way for us to not only uh reduce greenhouse gas emissions, but also reduce congestion. Uh, and with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much. I know that you have to leave at about seven fifteen. I'd like to open it up to, to questions here from the members. I do have one. Opening question for uh Sam Zimbabwe from Seattle. You know, so it seems in, uh, James Corliss and I were texting a little bit back and forth that Sacramento is sort of like where Seattle was maybe a couple of decades ago. Um, and Seattle, um, has made great progress when it comes to its public transportation network as you described. And I think it would be helpful to know what were the governmental decisions or the voter decisions that were made over the last couple of decades that led to the, to the progress in Seattle? A- and I kind of know the answer to my own question, but I'm not sure that the public does. As I understand it, in Seattle, that there have been a number of repeated transit only city uh, funding initiatives. And of course, in, in our area where we're part of a larger metropolitan region and we're part of a county, the strategy has been to go out, uh, countywide, which means that transit gets some money out of that, uh, uh, out of that deal, but that there are some other trade-offs which may or may not, uh, uh, help or harm the climate. And so what was it about Seattle, uh, and was it a city only approach that led to the progress that you described?
Um, well, first of all, I've only been a Seattleite for three years, a little bit more than three years. So I don't know if I can speak to the whole of the political history here, but I think you're, you're right in that we've continually asked people uh, to fund the things that they want to see, um, and then been able to deliver that. So, um, but that's not always been easy, uh, and, and I will say, so, so the, what you're talking about, there was a sales tax and vehicle license fee that was voter approved, uh, back in, um, twenty sixteen. Uh, and it started because a countywide measure had failed and there was sort of a doomsday scenario that transit was gonna have to get, service was gonna get cut drastically. And so the city put something on the ballot to say, we'll fill that gap for the city. We're gonna come and we're gonna buy some service. At the same time as it passed, the county also solved some of its, uh, the, the transit system at the county level solved some of the challenges. Uh, and so that really became something where the city could invest in that frequent transit network that I talked about and that trans, that, um, ten minute all-day service and demonstrate, sort of like what Jeff was talking about, proof of concept that, um, that this would be beneficial, this would help, uh, provide more people with access. And so we could rapidly expand here, the number of people that had good access to all-day transit service. Um, at the same time as we were making some of those capital improvements that made access more comfortable, uh, getting people to transit and also gave us some resources to try some new fare programs. Uh, do what you all have done already, kids ride, kids riding free, um, trying some new, uh, new types of ways to get more people making transit part of their daily lives. Um, I, I will say, you know, in some ways, we maybe are a couple of decades ahead. In other ways, uh, you all have done some investments that took the city of Seattle a long time to do. Our first light rail opened in, uh, two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Um, it's been a long, uh, a long stretch. You, you know, you all are ahead in some ways in some of the regional rail investments and making, um, the Sacramento region connected as well.
Mayor, could I dovetail off of your question? Cause I have a related question to funding.
Go, go, go ahead.
Thank you. I was just curious, especially before our San Francisco friend leaves us here and with James in Seattle and it's great perspectives here. Cause I've heard about a lot of different funding mechanisms, cause I personally find sales taxes to be a little bit regressive, nothing. That doesn't mean it doesn't work for some situations, but I like the thinking about a city's sales tax measure. But I've also heard people talking about, we really need to implement something like congestion pricing or some other types of mechanisms, especially because we have a lot of traffic that really is just coming through here one or two times a week on their way to Tahoe or on their way to Reno. And we're using like, we have a lot of the through traffic because we're at this freeway interchange. And so I guess I'm also curious to hear the panel's perspectives on like other funding mechanisms that you've seen work, like some pros, cons. And if you deploy them in new regions or if you don't, um, just so we can put those on the table as well.
Yeah, can I just add one thing if I may, and then we'll get to which is, I think it'd be helpful for our staff, uh, JDW, Jennifer Dunleavy, Dunleavy and the team here to actually report to us, uh, what other cities have done and city only, uh, have done when it comes to funding, uh, transit and active transportation. Um, in- including Councilmember Valenzuela's question, uh, about other sources. But I'd like to know the Seattle history here, for example, and what some other cities around the country have done. Go ahead.
Jeff, I don't know if you wanna talk about congestion pricing.
Congestion pricing, either you or, or Jeff.
I'll let Jeff go first. I can follow.
Okay, go, go.
So I think the number one rule of how you fund your system is what will the voters vote for? Um, nothing else really matters. So philosophical conversations about which forms of revenue are more or less equitable does not matter nearly so much as will they vote for it? And more importantly, what are you going to spend the net revenue on? So it is very straightforward to correct for any inequity in a tax measure through your expenditure plan so that the bulk of the benefit from that, that tax measure actually benefits, uh, the people with the fewest mobility choices. So in any conversation about equity, you need to consider both revenue raised, uh, as well as the expenditure, as well as the opportunity cost. Um, the cu- our current way of managing the transportation system is grossly inequitable in and of itself. So, uh, you know, that, that is much, much larger conversation, um, but make sure that you're having the equity conversation holistically. Um, and thinking about, um, uh, um, you know, how you're spending the money, which relates directly to the question of congestion pricing. Um, anytime you change either tax policy or pricing policy, there are winners and losers and people with lower incomes are always far more impacted by a change in price than people with greater disposable income. So in all cases, you need to pay very careful attention, um, to, um, who benefits um, and who is charged. Um, that's particularly true with congestion pricing. What we found in our equity analytics around congestion pricing in San Francisco is that many of our most vulnerable populations, um, are most harmed by the status quo. So for example, um, single parents who have to make multiple trips and who are charged by the hour when they're late to daycare. Um, many low income people place a very high value on their time and paying a small fee in order to use the roadway system that saves them hours of time a day can create significant net benefit, particularly if the net revenue is being invested in transportation improvements that directly benefit them. Um, that said, congestion pricing is exceedingly controversial because we as Americans conflate our freedom of mobility with the actual freeness of, of mobility. The hardest vote that any of you will ever possibly make, if you decide to go down this path, is to, is to pursue congestion pricing, even if you've done all of your homework um, around, um, minimizing negative impacts on disadvantaged populations and low income people and maximizing the benefit. Um, it is really, really tough politically.
You know, I'd just add on, um, when we talk about transportation equity, we've had some of the same conversations about uh, congestion pricing, same, same exact discussions that Jeff talked about. Uh, we have had a transportation equity work group for the last three years, uh, working on a framework, helping guide, uh, ESTA, the Department of Transportation on what it means to really make those equitable investments in transportation. A lot of the, the language and the, the vision of that equitable transportation system is actually not about, you know, how good condition the roads are in or things like that. It's about all the other things that a holistic transportation system provides, true community safety, uh, economic development, um, access to, to things that people need to get to, uh, and the sort of traditional transportation infrastructure doesn't always surface as like, these are the things that should be invested. So it's transit service, it's transit access, and it's making a safe community and safe system that has, is in a very holistic sense, not just a transportation safe, uh, system as well.
Okay. Let me go to Councilmember Harris and back to Councilmember Valenzuela. And any other members who wanna ask, especially our two out of town panelists, uh, any, any questions?
Yeah, first a quick statement, uh, about our transportation system there. The microtransit, uh, proposal has been a big win. And the reason it's been a big win is because our fixed rail, our light rail system, you know, are on high, height, uh, high volume corridors, but getting to and from the transit stations is difficult for most of our population. So microtransit fills in a big gap there. Of course, you know, other modes of transit, like, you know, walking and biking also help, but it's been a great thing. Uh, I, I agree with James Corliss that BRT on Stockton is something that we should focus on. And then there's the STA measure, and this gets to what your line of questioning there about whether or not we should act more as a city on our transportation issues, or whether through our transportation authority, we should keep focusing on a sales tax measure, uh, which would bring very substantial investment to our light rail system. You know, it's, that, that's a tough conversation. My, the way I land on it is that everybody needs roads, including microtransit and BRT systems and cyclists and pedestrians frankly. So repairing roads is important in our area. I, I personally support moving forward with an STA measure, even knowing that taxes are regressive. Um, Sam, I wanted to ask you a question, uh, just two quick ones. You mentioned that you're having an uptick in traffic fatalities and I'm wondering, are they car to car? Are they car to bike? Are they car to ped? And if they are involving alternate modes of transportation, do you think that there's a correlation with, you know, the, the, um, the push to get people onto, out there on their feet and on their bikes? Is that creating an issue?
Yeah, um, that's a good question. So it has been, uh, the last few years have been, uh, especially, uh, bad for, for car with pedestrian, um, fatalities. Uh, and I think there's a couple of things. So we like, um, like just about every city, you can map the fatalities to, uh, relatively few number, most of the fatalities to a relatively low number of streets, um, that are, are high injury, high, high crash network. Uh, those are often the streets that have been widened over time and are designed for high speed and don't have safe crossings for people. Um, we've also seen, uh, an uptick, a pretty big uptick in the number of unhoused people who are, uh, involved in those fatalities. Um, so, uh, those are sometimes, um, you know, uh, the, 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 the intersection of our housing crisis and our transportation safety crisis is, is, is real as well. And then in the last few years, there's been an increase in the number of hit and run fatalities as well. So, um, I always tend to think that those involve, uh, alcohol or, or substance issues. Um, but that's been an uptick. So this year, I think that, uh, it could have been as, or twenty twenty-one. Um, I think there were nine out of our thirty-one fatalities involved a hit and run. Which is a really high number for, for, um, a city like ours. So, uh, we've had a very good safety record overall. I think there's emerging evidence that there's also challenges in the sort of, all of our cities are facing this safety issue. There's vehicle issues, um, there's other things that are contributing to this, but in terms of some of those local issues, I don't think it's because we're encouraging more people to, uh, to walk and bike and sort of increasing exposure. Actually, those places where we've made the investments in safe walking and biking infrastructure are not seeing those, those fatalities. It's, it's the sort of persistent, uh, high crash network where there are real community changes that need to happen to reallocate street space and sort of slow, slow traffic, uh, down to safe levels.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great answer. I think we're seeing similar numbers here in our city. Last question, reducing speed to twenty-five miles per hour on arterials. Uh, I would imagine that you're seeing a lot of people speeding in those twenty-five mile an hour zones. I'd like to know if that's true. And if it's not true, is it because you stepped up enforcement? Are you finding you're doing a lot of ticketing? I mean, when I think about our arterials here, which are thirty to forty mile an hour, um, posted, which means fifteen miles an hour reality. Uh, and we do have a lot of fatalities, certainly in a corridor in my district. Um, how are people reacting to slowing so radically? Twenty-five miles an hour is slower than most people are used to traveling.
Yeah, you know, um, so there's, there's a lot of very, uh, good rule following folks in, in Seattle. So that if you put it, if you change a sign, people actually will read it and respond to it. Uh, but a, a couple of things. First of all, we did some case studies. Um, we did, we did this on a few corridors and found that, um, the, the, uh, average speed went down. The high end speeders went way down, um, and the number of crashes went down. So even if there are some violations of the speed limit, we were finding that just changing the signs and actually putting more frequent speed limit signs, uh, we, we reduced the spacing of those signs to about a quarter mile from where they used to be about a mile apart. That was changing people's behavior, no other physical changes to the street. When we add in some physical changes to the street, uh, and I think if you've got arterial, you know, our arterials were generally signed at thirty miles an hour and we're reducing them to twenty-five, um, if you've got them signed at thirty and forty, those are the types of places where, you know, I said, we've done ninety percent. Those extra ten percent were the places where, um, we thought that changing the signs alone wouldn't have some of those, uh, those, those safety benefits. And you really needed to do some re-engineering of the street, narrowing, uh, and, and you often create space for other things when you, when you do some of that reallocation. Uh, even just narrowing lanes a little bit gets you some space on a wide arterial. Um, and then focusing on safe crossings of those streets, those wide arterials with high speeds. Um, when people are trying to cross those unprotected, uh, that's when you get, uh, serious, serious injuries and fatalities too. So it's, it's really thinking about how to, um, change the character of those streets, but on, on sort of more normal, um, arterial streets, reducing this, reducing the limit and improving the number of signs, increasing the, the frequency with which people get reminded of it, was bringing down the speeds and the, and the number of crashes alone without more enforcement. And that is like, uh, we, we did not want to do it if it was gonna be something where we were then like creating an enforcement, uh, you know, need, a need for stepped up enforcement. Um, so that, that, we, there were not, we're not increasing enforcement along with those speed limit reductions.
Yeah, thank you for that. It's food for thought, certainly for our public works department, and I'm sure we'll be talking about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. Hey, um, I, I just wanna say, I, I know we're obviously not debating any particular countywide transportation measure tonight. But I do wanna say why I raised the issue or at least wanna look at uh, what other cities around the country have done, are, with city only uh, transportation taxes of any kind, whether it's, uh, congestion pricing or, or sales tax. The reason is this, because if we're serious about climate and the climate imperative, and that is the overriding objective, which I believe that it should be, then we have a responsibility to ask one simple question when it comes to any measure, city measure or countywide measure. Does it improve? Or does it make worse our climate? And the answer to that question is, is really important if we're going to back up our, our, um, aspiration to be the most climate friendly city that we can be. But that's why I raised the issue, uh, without, without coming to any conclusions. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, and I hope if nothing else, based on the data, we at least stop building larger arterial, arterial roads and expanding big roads because that just makes it less safe for everybody. But, um, I do wanna, um, ask kind of like a bigger picture question, both of like the folks that work here and the folks who don't work here. Because something I've always found really interesting, working in Sacramento, transportation policy, which I've been around and advocating on and bugging people about for easily the last ten years is how, how fragmented it feels in Sacramento. And this is not a knock on, on anybody who works in the system or the city or anybody. But it's like, you know, we've got our city public works and department that does amazing work. You've got the RT board, you've got the transportation authority board that oversees the sales tax measure. You've got SECOG, um, you've got like all these different layers, um, within the city. And it finds it, I find it difficult to innovate and I find it difficult to really figure out how to move. Cause if you're trying to do anything, like with the last sales tax measure, we were just trying to advocate around the language and kept being told like, oh no, you gotta go to this board, this board, this board. And by the end of it, we were like, who's making decisions here? We can't really decide. But as a slight tangent to say, I'm curious, because you all have been transportation experts for a long time. And I asked this of the city team too and the regional team too. It's like, what are we, what is that best practice in other regions that we might be missing? And this could be from your region, it could be from another region that you've seen where they've really been able to shift course. Cause I really feel like more than anything, and this came out in Anne's comments and other emails I've gotten this week, it feels like we need to shift course on how we're planning and implementing transportation so we can take a better advantage of funding, so we can do more innovative strategies. And I guess I'm just looking to you all for some of those ideas. That's why I threw out something like congestion pricing. Like, like what are those best practices that we're potentially missing that we? like what are those best practices that we're potentially missing that we could, that could potentially work in Sacramento that we should be looking at that? You know, maybe it's a crazy idea that you've had that you're like, gosh, if I could write the law, I like to say like, hey, if you could write the law, what would it say? And just see what people come out with. Um, but like, what is, what are we missing potentially that we should be looking at as a city if we really want to tackle? And I'm beyond 2045. I'm in 2030 camp all the way. I want us to try to get to zero by 2030. But I also recognize in addition to the funding hurdles, which is a whole conversation, that's going to require us to fundamentally rethink how we do things. And so I'm just curious, I just want to put that out there for your ideas. And I have other comments for after we hear public comment, but I just curious before you leave us.
If Mr. Tomlin has to leave early, maybe he wants to take that one.
Let me, let me just give you one really easy one. Um, and that is, um, for your executive staff. Give them a contract with generous severance. And give them really clear outcomes that they are responsible for achieving. The work that we're required to do in the transport sector is exceedingly controversial, which is why we've made so little progress. And you need to provide cover for your staff leaders to actually do that work. That also provides some cover for all of you as policymakers. Cause you can blame your out of control staff person, you're not allowed to fire for another, you know, four years. The other thing is, and one of the reasons why we've been affected at SSMPA is we have our own commission. So I, I have 19 bosses, um, but I, um, report to an independent commission um, that is appointed by the mayor and can only be removed for costs. And that, that provides a great deal of insulation for me politically to be able to make the hard policy calls uh, in order to, uh, uh, create change in the pace, uh, that we're moving at. And I'm sure Sam may have some thoughts about that as well. Uh, but I, I, I need to go to another meeting right now. Thank you all so much for these, uh, great questions and Godspeed, uh, with your work.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate your time. Wow. That was, that was provocative one.
Yeah. And I, you know, I would, I would say, um, that there's, that there's maybe no one thing. Jeff's ideas are interesting and, and definitely have some merit on the, the insulation from hard decisions. I think it's a, it's, it's a lot of, you know, it's, he talked about doing a thousand or a hundred small things rather than one large. Um, I think it's both the large and the small. So there's no, there, I, it's hard to say there's just this one thing. Um, I also really don't want to overlook the, uh, role and influence of land use, that land use and, and how close things are to people really drives a lot of their transportation decision-making. And so many people, when they think about changing their transportation choices, what they do right now is so hardwired into everything that they do. And that's driven by the land use and only changing the transportation is it, it makes it feel harder to people when they're, when things are, are not closer together or more integrated with each other. And that's, you know, school and shopping and job and things like that. And giving people those, um, those ways to envision a different pattern, um, is, is part of changing their transportation choices too. And making it less sort of feel disconcerting or feel like it's being done to them rather than being done, uh, with them.
Okay. I know Henry and Ryan Moore have their hands up. I will note that Ryan put his hand down when Jeff started talking. So maybe he got a little anxious by the suggestion, but.
Well, we're going to hear from Henry Lee, Ryan Moore, and then we're going to start the public test movie.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you, Jeff and Sam for the inspirational presentations. And Jeff didn't get a chance to listen to me. My video is not working today. Sorry about that. But I really want to thank you, Mayor, for raising the question about, you know, funding transit and the active transportation funding from the city perspective. Uh, because we all know, you know, just, uh, just to be frank, you know, uh, funding is a foundational issue. And without a funding, you really cannot do much. And both, uh, Seattle and, uh, San Francisco, they, they, they public transit and the active transportation received probably five times more local funding than what we have received. But, uh, we have, you know, uh, tried to make sure our public transit system, uh, is running, uh, as efficiently as, you know, possible. And, uh, you know, uh, we will continue to run, you know, even more efficiently and effectively in the future, if you give us more funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Moore?
Yeah, I, I, uh, first of all, let me see. I'm not sure I'm crazy about this severance thing. Um, let's just keep things where they're at. But I do want to also mention, um, in response to Councilmember Valenzuela's question, I think something we've been working on that we're very excited to bring back. And we've talked about it a lot is our transportation priorities plan. And as much as that may sound like kind of a wonky policy thing, we're very hopeful this will revolutionize the way we prioritize transportation infrastructure investment in Sacramento. It, it almost exactly addresses the question that Councilmember Valenzuela brought up. We want to get away from, uh, sort of siloed investments and sort of streets maintenance, for example, for its own sake. Perhaps the street that is most deserving of investment is not the street that strictly has the lowest pavement quality, but it's the street that has a low pavement quality and also has a demonstrable increase in collisions. And it has needs for other, other improvements. So this is something we're bringing forward this year, and we're hopeful this will become the policy document that takes us to a quantum leap in the direction that, uh, Councilmember Valenzuela just mentioned. We're very excited about it. And if I can just mention, I think Jennifer had just a few more last little slides before her presentation's done, if, if there's time. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Um, I, I made a mistake. I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer, Jennifer Donlin Wyatt, um, for some concluding comments. And I think it would be helpful, Jennifer, we keep talking about the seven big ideas. Why don't you just lay them out, um, here? And again, as Anne said, they're not the only big ideas, uh, by any means, but, um, they're, they're a start. So why don't, uh, why don't you lay them out, please?
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody. The best laid plans of how we organize a council workshop, we always maybe go a little sideways. Um, and I know it's been a long evening, so I'm going to skip over my plans. If you have questions about electric vehicles, let me know. But these are the seven big ideas that we're talking about. Um, we're talking about bikeway superhides. We have a fantastic, fabulous off-street shared use path network that is incomplete. And we'd like to close the gaps on them. The Jack Rabbit Trail, the Nino's Parkway, Sacramento River Parkway, and to start and build the Morrison Creek Trail. And this will connect all parts of our city into the core, into recreational opportunities. We also want to, uh, I'm sure you all know, but let me just reiterate that our grid is the urban core, the regional employment center, the entertainment center for the region. Um, and that we also know that biking for four miles or less, a normal person could do. And so what we want to do is be, provide that opportunity to, to have a low stress and complete biking network for, within four miles of the core. And that includes traffic calming on Riverside Boulevard, bike lanes on 24th South City College, MLK getting traffic calming as well. So those big, big ideas. And then we talked about this a little bit already, but uplifting and supporting transit. The 51 on Stockton is the highest ridership route of regional transit. It goes through some of our most under-resourced communities. And wouldn't it be great to kick off a, a project that has, uh, the mobility, the equity, provide reliable and frequent transit on Stockton Boulevard all the way from 47th up to Alhambra. Uh, and that can be the blueprint for more transit enhancements in the city. Now I want to tell you, before you get too excited about all these projects, of course, they all come with a price tag. And that price tag is, we think for these seven big ideas, it's about seven, uh, two, $200 million. Uh, and this is a lot. Um, it will require commitment. It'll require regional collaboration. There's no way that we can do this on our own. But it also costs us a lot to not do anything. Uh, but before you say, Jennifer, $200 million, no way. Want to remind us about some of the other transportation projects that are happening in our region and those costs. The carpool lanes on I-5, $600 million. The carpool lanes on Highway 50, $150 million. Don't forget the connector at $580 million. So we think about the cost of $200 million. It's really very relative. But it also requires us to be transformative. And being transformative is possible. We have been, and I talk, we globally have been transformative before. We, as a society, both the state and the federal government have spent billions of dollars building, building freeways that support moving goods and connecting communities. Uh, but we thought that was a good thing and connecting people is a good thing. The building freeways also destroyed and disconnected neighborhoods. Uh, disconnected from economic centers, from opportunity. This video is of Oakland, but we have the same story here in Sacramento. Oak Park was disconnected from cities to the, from communities to the west and to the north with 99 and 50. Southside neighborhood lost a quarter of its park and hundreds of homes to build Highway 50. Um, and both were cut off from the more affluent neighborhoods nearby. And so we can be transformative again, but maybe this time we can center climate, safety and equity in the work that we do. Other cities have done it. This is an example of in a city that within eight years, eight years ago on the left and 2020 on the right, that did a holistic plan and implemented to improve biking, uh, to prove, provide connectivity. And we can do this too. We're a really awesome city and we can support walking, biking and transit. And we don't do it for transportation as utility. I mean, I happen to be a transportation nerd and I love it. But we're really doing this for our communities. This is about our neighborhoods and the people who live here. Uh, this is what Mayela said, and I thoroughly support the concept of us doing transportation for our communities. And so what we ask of you tonight, counsel, is what do you think of our seven big ideas? Um, do you have comments on them? And, and with me tonight are the whole team of folks that have been working on this, including Hector Barone, Jennifer Venema, Ryan Moore, David Adrosland, and Lucinda Wilcox. So thank you very much. And we're happy to take any questions.
Okay, let's hear from the public and then, uh, we will come back to the city council for discussion among ourselves and/or with any of, uh, panelists, including our, our city staff. Uh, I'm going to call on Roger Dickinson first, uh, been active in these measures for, uh, a long time, a long time public official in Sacramento. Roger?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and, and Council. Good evening. Uh, there's a lot that could be discussed this evening, but I really want to focus on one hopefully practical aspect of what's been raised in the conversation to, to this point. Uh, and I want to pick up a thread that, uh, Ryan Moore introduced, uh, in his, uh, closing uh, comments. There are really two things I think that are, uh, important to keep in mind. Um, with the passage of SB one and the Federal Infrastructure and Investment Act, there's more money than ever for transportation projects. Mayor, I think you noted that at the outset. Through both the federal legislation and the state climate action plan for transportation infrastructure called CAPTIA for short, there is a significant shift in investment strategy to favor projects that reduce GHG emissions and benefit the climate. Jurisdictions that prioritize such projects will have the greatest success in obtaining state and federal funds. As the staff has noted, the challenge for the city is coming up with the local match for state and federal money. I encourage you to ask the staff to work with SECOG, STA and other stakeholders to develop the city's transportation budget in a manner that will maximize the opportunity to obtain state and federal funding that yields climate benefits. I know that doing so may mean rethinking the traditional approach to budgeting as far as transportation is concerned. But it is critical. We have no alternative and no time to waste. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Valley Vision.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Adrian Wren and my organization, Valley Vision, served on the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change and has worked for over 25 years to improve quality of life in the greater Sacramento region. Really appreciate city leadership and staff for making time for this important conversation. In line with comments from our partners at the SAC Moves Coalition, to which Valley Vision belongs, we also encourage you to commit meaningful resources, AKA money in the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget to advance the seven big idea projects and strategies laid out in the staff report. But these projects are only the beginning. We need to do much more and we need a plan to do so. These projects will require fast track funding and new processes to get them completed in a reasonably short period of time. But to get anywhere near achieving the goals of the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change and to meet the city's 2019 climate emergency declaration, we need to think outside the box. It's so important for the city of Sacramento to be a leader in advancing transportation equity that addresses our air quality and climate goals. We might have only 20% of the region's population within the city limits. But Sacramento is a bellwether. And as the mayor said, we are the state capital. The innovative things we do here often inspire action in our region's other jurisdictions and across the state. So it's extra important to be bold in figuring out a way to move these projects forward and then get to the hard stuff. And as we know, the air quality and climate change don't care about jurisdictional boundaries. So, uh, in summary, I hope you'll commit real resources to these projects and continue to work with advocates, subject matter experts and residents to make tonight a turning point in the city's road to a resilient future. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Tardagia.
Good evening, Mayor. Um, as both a RT ambassador and participating in public transportation for at least the last decade or longer, um, will offer and say to you that please, city, invest in the money, invest in air quality. So you determine what you're changing and doing. You've got three projects that way. Observing what the, coming from the San Francisco area of the Link 91, I believe it is, or Link 21. And also just paying attention to what YOLO is talking about for the I-80 corridor, the impacts that that will have over the next 10 years. I would like you to think, what do you need to achieve by 2050? And then turn around right now, make the decisions of where you're looking at air quality, where you're looking at what improvements. And also you definitely need to look about for pedestrians, what you can do to make pedestrians safer. Right now you have a lot of that as danger area within your own city limits. And so even if you come up with a number or form of tax, I know you had a lot of business owners that were interested in supporting when you had some other proposals. Involve the whole community, convince them. Right now in the Sacramento County, you've had less than 10 answers back for active transportation. They were doing something today. And there were other things going on, but here in the city, I live in it and I see your problems and you need to address them. Maybe you need to get this grid supporting so that it does something and return to it two decades ago of a dollar transportation here to get through the city limits and get better ways of providing things to happen. Getting more people to use public transportation, which is not happening now. We need to do better and advertise it better. And I thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hey, Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, before you call the next person, I told that there may be people trying to raise their hands. Who can't raise their hand in the.
Uh, our typical process is to disable the raise hand feature once we begin taking public comment. Would you like me to allow raising hands?
Yeah, one more time and then we'll close it again. So if you're not on now, members, we do have to have, you know, some, some finite period here, but yes, let's, let's allow people who are trying to get in to get in now and then close it.
The queue has been opened.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kyle Gradinger.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, you kicked off this workshop by noting that the youth of Sacramento, uh, asked for action on climate change. My name is Kyle Gradinger. I'm a resident of Council District Four. My household has two adults, two school age children and one car. That car has sat idle more than ever since COVID began, sometimes for weeks at a time. We bike almost everywhere, including taking our children to their midtown school every day. Our three mile trip takes about 12 minutes. Aside from two brothers in the upper grades, we are the only family that bikes to our school. Recently, our growing eight-year-old asked the question I've been hoping for as he gets taller and heavier. When can I ride my own bike to school? This gave me pause. Of course, I'm thrilled that my kids are excited to keep biking. But I thought about the route that we take, the route that my wife and I have perfected over time. We revised that route so that we would avoid dangerous intersections, busy cross streets, pushy tailgaters and that coffee shop driveway where drivers just can't seem to pay attention to the road instead of their hot coffee. That thought process frightened me. Yes, I will happily ride my kids around town. I've had years of experience learning the ins and outs of how to ride around Sacramento safely. But too often that act requires extreme vigilance and street smarts, traits the kids don't have. Trails and bike highways are fantastic ideas and we should absolutely pursue them. But those are just the tip of the iceberg. If we want our children, my children, my neighbor's children, all children in Sacramento, to be able to utilize the incredible. to be able to utilize the incredible climate change fighting tool that is the bicycle, then we must have infrastructure everywhere that is safe for everyone enough for children to use. If it isn't safe enough for children, it really isn't safe enough for any of us. Let's take the great work that has been done by city staff and keep going. Let's reimagine streets across the city to reallocate road space, slow traffic, and provide easy-to-use, safe, reliable, and protected bike infrastructure to connect our communities to schools, jobs, transit stops, and all of the opportunities that are out there. I thank the city council for hosting this workshop and, and taking the time to listen to me and my fellow Sacramentoans. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Austin Wilmouth.
Hi, yeah, I'm Austin. I was just wondering, are, are we doing, is there anything being done to encourage like businesses to move their employees away, specifically larger companies, I guess, away from having them be so car-centric to get there? Like encouraging like, through taxes or through like fees to get them to, get people, like companies to push people to use public transport as far as cars, instead of cars? Because I think that would encourage a lot of private companies to be more engaged into it, because right now I don't think that, like, they might not care as much about like what, what kind of, how their employees get to work. But if there was that kind of encouragement, I think that would be beneficial. And that's kind of all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Civic Thread.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and Council Representatives. My name is Kiara Reen. I'm the Executive Director of Walk Sacramento Doing Business as Civic Thread, a nonprofit organization in the business of co-creating healthy built environments. We appreciate the city's commitment to this workshop, the work of the Climate Commission, and recent and current planning processes that focus on active transportation. However, as advocates, we are compelled to reiterate the need to prioritize equity and ensure, and ensure it is at the heart of the decision-making process as the city navigates reducing greenhouse gas emissions and implementing a bold, and I repeat, bold, climate action plan. We supported the city as a member of the Vision Zero Task Force and have supported a number of other planning processes. Through these collaborative efforts and Civic Thread's own mission work, we've heard from parents, families, students, and several school communities about the dangers of simply rolling, walking, or biking in their community. We know that collisions occur at disproportionate rates in communities of high concentrations of Black and Brown residents, low-income residents, and minority and/or immigrant populations. Many of these communities lack the most basic active transportation infrastructure like sidewalks and convenient and frequent crossing opportunities. Additionally, many of these communities tend to rely on active transportation, contribute less to climate change, but bear the brunt of environmental injustices. As such, we urge the city to prioritize investments that address the longstanding neglect of our institutionally underserved and environmental justice communities in a way that both centers community voices and actively prevents gentrification and displacement. Creating accessible communities that are walkable and bikeable is good for individual health, community health, and the environment. Thank you for your consideration of our comments. We look forward to continued collaboration in creating a Sacramento where everyone can thrive.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jeremiah. Jeremiah, if you'll unmute.
Jeremiah Rohr, daily commuter. How we spend our transportation dollars on, is how we create our built environments. We design streets, parking lots, and strip malls. All we get is streets, parking lots, and strip malls. We will never have a walkable, bikeable, community-centered neighborhoods so that, that so many of us claim we want without intent. Our local transportation dollars right here in Sacramento are the biggest influence on how our communities are connected. It is up to you, the members of this city council, to set the priorities for these decisions and communicate the importance of these decisions clearly to your city manager so that he directs his transportation and engineering staff to make this happen. It is also up to you to carry the water to, to the end. When we talk about climate change, we talk about transportation. When we talk about congestion, we talk about transportation. When we talk about equity, we talk about transportation. When we talk about jobs, we talk about transportations. But when we talk about changing transportations, loud voices are always heard preventing even little changes. People in cars complain about everything. They like it when they are, it's just like when they are on social media and are isolated in their pods, frustrated that this American automobile dream we've been sold does not work, and they develop real road rage. Then they scream on Twitter that you, when you try to change it. You must be resolute and not let loud voices prevent us from having a city, having nice things in our city. You, the members of the city council, must be the adults in the room and do the right things to make our communities human again and, and center our transportations around moving people, not just cars. The demographics of our city are changing. Housing is booming in the downtown commercial space, and commercial space sits vacant. The state has decided to embrace telecommuting. We no longer need one-way commuters.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
We, we need walkable, bikeable, scootable, safe streets so people feel safe.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Daphne.
Hello, City Council. Thank you very much for having this workshop and allowing us to speak. Two or several things I'd like to bring to your attention. I used to be a commuter that went from downtown to San Francisco, also living in the Elgroth community. I'd like for you to take a look at the transportation map. You'll notice that districts eight, six, and two are inequitably accessible to those routes. If you look at the blue line and the gold line compared on the light rail that we currently have, the wait times on the blue line are anywhere from thirty to sixty minutes, whereas the wait time on the gold line is fifteen minutes. The other thing I want you to look at is you're comparing Sacramento to a city like Seattle. Seattle is sixty-seven percent Caucasian, very little color district in there. Look at that comparison to the Sacramento demographic. I think you need to take a look at that as well. Also, look at the economic income. Seattle has a hundred thousand dollar median income, where you're looking at Sacramento at sixty-two percent. You're looking at also EV vehicles that are being purchased. The minimum vehicle purchase is twenty thousand dollars for an EV vehicle. If you look at the EV vehicle pumps that we're putting in all the different communities, they are not accessing or accessible to those who are underserved. So, I think what you need to do is look at your current transportation system, get it more equitable throughout. Look at all the transportation on the east side of ninety-nine. You'll notice that there are a lot of gaps in the different neighborhoods, especially those living in eight, six, and two. So, those are things that you can work on before trying to decrease the carbon footprint. Also, look at whole communities, putting things within the community so people don't have to transit, transport from South Sacramento to downtown. Build up South Sacramento so we can live within our communities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Civic Thread.
Hello, my name is Christina Zhang, and I'm representing Walk Sacramento Doing Business as Civic Thread. We thank you for the opportunity to speak to these issues and providing the space for us to contribute to the efforts of the Transportation and Climate Workshop. I'd like to highlight the importance of two major benefits of prioritizing investment to active transportation infrastructure, the goal of reducing vehicle miles traveled. The first being increased opportunities for physical activity, and the second, equitable access for all. In addition to injury and death caused by vehicle collisions, lack of investments in active transportation can also lead to other morbidities and fatalities. Not only does active transportation provide various cost-effective options for individuals to get around, it does so while promoting healthy living and the no-cost opportunity to integrate physical activity to their daily lives. When looking at Sacramento data from the twenty twenty California Health Interview Survey, we can see adult obesity increasing in the last few years, all while obesity rates in the county of Sacramento continue to exceed the average statewide and nationwide value. Rates of obesity, walk scores and transit scores are inversely related. So, while walk and transit scores rise, obesity rates go down. By addressing active transportation infrastructure, it can be supportive in reducing risk for preventable health consequences such as diabetes, heart disease, stroke, and death. We also see reducing vehicle miles traveled to be the more equitable option in comparison to electric vehicles. While we understand that accessibility may only be possible or safest through a personal vehicle and agree that EV will be effective in mitigating greenhouse gases, we strongly believe it should not overshadow other important long-term benefits when investing in active transportation. Even at a low cost and with financial incentive, personal transportation may not be an option for everyone, while active transportation is designed for all. Various to car ownership especially affects people living in institutionally disadvantaged, low socioeconomic and environmental justice communities. These barriers include but are not limited to associated costs, access to a license, and a physical ability to drive. When prioritizing focus onto reducing vehicle miles traveled, it translates to prioritizing accessibility and safe transportation for everyone in the city of Sacramento.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Catherine Keneppa.
Hello and good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Catherine Keneppa, and I'm representing Walk Sacramento Doing Business as Civic Thread. We're a nonprofit organization focused on co-creating healthy built environments. Thank you for hearing our comments and for holding this workshop. We appreciate that the city continues to put thought into how to create a less car-centric transportation environment, as this is a critical piece to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and meeting the city's chemicals. As one of the foremost safe routes to school experts in the region, we work with parents, students, and school administrators and hear their feedback on shortcomings in the active transportation network that have hugely negative impacts on safety. Office of Traffic Safety data shows that of fifteen other cities of similar size in California, Sacramento ranks third worst for bicyclists under fifteen years old getting killed or injured, and second worst for pedestrian injuries and deaths under fifteen years old. As the city builds out its active transportation policies, we urge you to prioritize active transportation infrastructure within a one-mile radius of elementary schools and a one-and-a-half mile radius of middle and high schools in order to improve safety and comfort for youth and their families, and encourage active modes of travel for short distances. Specific improvements to bicycle infrastructure that we recommend within the designated radius of schools include signage and establishing class-three bike routes on secondary residential streets, class-two bike lanes along primary residential streets, and class-one shared-use paths or class-four separated cycle tracks along artorial and collector streets. We also recommend enhancing crosswalks and intersections in immediate vicinity to schools and improving sidewalk connections to serve pedestrians walking to school. Finally, we've known for a long time that there's a lack of tree canopy in the city's environmental justice communities. Prioritizing trees as critical active transportation infrastructure encourages walking, biking, and rolling, and supports carbon sequestration as well. Thanks for considering our comments.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Dan Allison.
Good evening, Dan Allison, District Four, and also speaking for Sacramento Transit Advocates and Riders. We support the identification of Stockton Boulevard and Route fifty-one, or improved bus lanes, improved transit. The Stockton Boulevard Corridor Plan was good, certainly better than what's there now, but there were a lot of compromises made that harmed the transit aspect. We believe it should be a transit-first corridor. We want to see true bus rapid transit on that route, and we look forward to the detail on the Stockton Plan improvements so that we can work with the city on those. And there are a large number of other transit enhancements the city could make. So, we see this one as just the first step. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Lori Littman. Lori Littman, if you'll unmute.
Got it. Dear Mayor, Council, and Staff, I'm Lori Littman, President Emerita of Three Fifty Sacramento. I appreciate your holding this workshop and the excellent speakers, but this is only a first step. What counts are your actions. You passed a climate emergency declaration and accepted the Climate Commission's recommendations, but you still don't seem to understand that workshops and resolutions and nice words and even EVs are not going to save us from the climate crisis. We are out of time. Excuse me. We need to transform our city immediately into one that centers people over cars. This will cut emissions dramatically as well as making our community healthier, happier, and more equitable and just. So far, the small, slow incremental steps you've taken are actually delaying tactics that avoid doing the real work that needs to be done. For example, you half-heartedly set up some slow streets, then quickly discontinued them. The seven big ideas just unveiled are disappointingly limited. Do better, be bolder, more creative, and show us that you're serious. A couple of easy, immediate steps could be to restart and expand slow streets and cut speed limits across the city to twenty-five miles per hour or less, which would make active transportation safer as well as making a statement that you are prioritizing people over cars. We are calling on you to be climate heroes, to be visionaries. Think big, think urgent, de-center cars, and instead, center the people you represent. I want to highlight what Mayela said. Bold is the bare minimum. We expect, need, and deserve much better. Please show us that you're up to the job.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kate Wilkins.
Good evening, Council. I'm Kate Wilkins, a lifelong Sacramento resident, current resident in Curtis Park and Councilmember Shanier's District, and a volunteer at Three Fifty Sacramento. Thank you for having this workshop. Last year, I saw the news that Paris planned to make their city completely cyclable by twenty twenty-six. Then this January, I was awed to see Milan approve a plan to add over four hundred and fifty miles of bike lanes to their city. They've decided it's time to reclaim these car-centered environments and make people-centered cities. I remember thinking, wow, those are big commitments with serious goals and serious funding. I can't believe their leaders committed to that. And the fact that I was incredulous is a sad indictment of what I've come to expect most of the time from government. I have to ask myself, why can't we have things like this? What's the difference between us and other cities like this? Why can't we have big, people-centered transportation networks and projects? And I know, it's expensive. These projects cost two hundred million dollars. But it's more than just a money issue, as we know, isn't it? It's also political will. But I want to tell you that you can do this. You can do this, and you can champion active transit and start with these projects. Every city council member sitting here in December twenty nineteen said that we were in a climate emergency. We're counting on you to show that this commitment was not lip service, that you will show up for these active transit projects and find the dollars to fund them. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jeff Dahl.
Hi, thank you. So, I just wanted to talk a little bit about specific infrastructure close to where I live, specifically Franklin Boulevard and Consonus River Boulevard. Consonus River Boulevard specifically is the new stretch from Franklin to I five. These are, in my mind, perfect examples of what's called a strode. It's neither a street nor a road, and it fails at both. And for these two strodes, you have a planted medium that's good at protecting cars, but then it pretty much stops there. You have sidewalks, some parts of which, yeah, maybe they're plant, they have plant-protected mediums, but then you get to the bicycle, bicycle infrastructure, and then it just turns into a painted bicycle gutter where, you know, the trash goes. And I've ridden my bikes through the, my bikes through these gutters often enough to know, and I've had, suffered multiple flat tires on my bikes, to know that, that really is where you're sticking cyclists, where the trash goes. That needs to change, especially if you really want to address climate change. Because sticking the, what someone previously said is the best solution for climate change, the bicycle into the gutter, is not going to do it. People won't feel comfortable riding the bicycle gutter. I heard someone earlier say, we're setting a goal of seventy percent driving. That's a failure. You want to really meaningfully address climate change, you need to get that down to more like twenty to twenty-five percent. Boost bicycling and transit. Otherwise, you will fail. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Ifrin Brennan.
Hi, thank you for holding this workshop today. I'm a local resident in District Seven and a local architect. And I just want to say that climate change is the issue of our lifetime. And I think it's really important to focus on anything and everything we can do to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and improve the likelihood of our success of halting the process that's going on right now. The measures that have been laid out are a no-brainer, and these are just the bare minimum and a first step in the right direction. So, I encourage the city council to advocate for spending the money required to make this happen. And I hope that in, in this process, we can find time and ways to innovate new ideas and new ways of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and improving the networked livability of Sacramento. It's a great city. It's a garden city, and access for pedestrians and cyclists and public transit will just increase the livability of this place. And I just want to say, thank you for holding this conversation and starting this whole process.
Thanks for your comments. The next speaker is James Harold.
There's the mute button. Hello. Thank you for giving us this time to speak. I just wanted to say that I am troubled and a little bit disappointed by the constant unspoken refrain of timidity and of a fear of backlash from folks who are looking at ways to make transportation projects happen. I am 33 years old. I'm active with multiple local and national environmental groups. We are a very tightly knit community, and we talk to each other all the time about what's going on at the local and the national and the international level. And what we're looking for, more than almost anything else, from local leaders is ambition. And this was a conversation where I came in hoping to hear that ambition about the transformative things you were going to do, and I didn't hear it. I heard a lot of concern about backlash and about people not liking transit projects. Well, first off, on a light note, let me assure you that the only thing that Sacramentoans hate more than transit construction is Sacramento drivers. So anything that you can do to reduce general speeds would be a fantastic first step, but also, we really don't want as many cars as we have on the road right now on the road. So these changes would be welcomed. And on a larger note, people my age, like, climate change is something that we talk about frequently. It is a growing bipartisan issue. People in red states and blue states are both facing more and more negative effects of climate change. And if you start to make these changes and these moves, you will have our support. If you give us something to build, something to work towards with you, then we will follow you. We're, we're just waiting to see those projects and those ideas given serious support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Steve Kohn. Steve Kohn, if you'll unmute.
Sorry. Thank you for tonight's excellent panel discussion. I encourage you to keep the momentum going and direct staff to move forward with their plan for seven big ideas, but I also echo Anne Stasboll's comments that these seven ideas are really the starting point and not the ending point. And I want to make sure that you take the Mayor's Commission Climate Change Report off the shelf and move it front and center. And I also direct your attention to the letter from SAC Moves Coalition urging council to direct the city manager and staff to include funding in your 2223 budget for the local share of the Big Seven Ideas, as well as to develop a strategic plan to use this local funding to minimize greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled and maximize the city's leverage for obtaining federal, state, and regional transportation climate change funding. So please also take up Public Works Director Ryan Moore's proposal to transform the Transportation Priorities Plan into a viable strategy to transform our transportation system. Thank you. Look forward to hearing your discussion.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is PJ.
PJ, he/him. So, sales taxes are negative, are regressive. Minority and poorer communities are already disproportionately impacted by climate change and pollution. The last thing we should be looking for is to pay for the excesses of the rich, many of whom made profits in ways that exacerbated climate change, on the backs of those most negatively impacted by climate change. Sales taxes, too simplistic a solution, is inequitable, full stop. I have to agree with the presenters. We need more robust steps taken. Electrification isn't the be-all, end-all. Primarily higher-income folks can afford to buy new cars, let alone electric cars, so equity would have us look elsewhere if that is a primary concern. We need robust transit infrastructure to replace people's need to take their cars and convince them that they don't need to take those cars anymore, so they can see how their cars are more of a hassle than the readily available robust transit infrastructure available. The Air Resources Board is doing its part to regulate emissions in on-road and off-road vehicles to constrain the emissions coming out of vehicles. The city's role is to provide an option to taking that car from the outset. We can't affect emissions of vehicles. That isn't our purview, but we can drastically affect transit options that are feasible for people to take, and our need is to make them preferential. As in San Francisco, we don't need cleaner transit options. We need more robust transit options to ensure the personal trip in the personal car isn't even a thought in people's heads, because they know public transit meets their needs. Your choices now will weigh most heavily on your minds in 20 or 30 years. Regardless of how much money you've made, how much power you've accumulated, it will weigh on you as you see your children and grandchildren grow and stare down the barrel of your action or inaction. There is no option for measured, slow, moderate change that preserves concerns for profits above people. People must come first, or they're suffer, they'll be suffering at a scale that we haven't seen in centuries or even millennia. Rather than following nearby large cities, we could leave for once. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Melissa Ming.
Hi there, Council. My name is Melissa Ming, and I'm speaking on behalf of North Atomas Jibe. We are an organization that provides education, services, and advocacy to encourage walking, biking, and public transportation. For years, Jibe has been working with the city to complete and improve the Jackrabbit Trail. It's a Class I bike path that runs north to si, to south from Elkhorn Boulevard through downtown and beyond, and it's a great, well-used facility by all types of riders, but it still has significant gaps that are barriers for riding. And these barriers hinder the potential for residents to use the trail to get to destinations like school, work, and shopping. So residents, families, would prefer to make these trips by bike rather than car if they could use the trail system effectively. While adoption of electric cars is important, to be successful in reducing greenhouse gas emissions, we have to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Many people in our community can't and don't drive and can't afford an electric car. As a city, it's imperative that we invest and strengthen our active transportation network. It's cost-effective, and it can also serve more people more equitably. The city has a terrific active transportation staff and existing plans, and if those plans are built, they will reduce greenhouse gases by giving people more safe, comfortable options, not using cars. But plans require funding and strong political will to become reality. We urge council to start this process by supporting staff recommendations and prioritizing funding to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Daniel Potowski.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. Dan Paskowski, 31-year resident, arborist, and avid cyclist. I use my bikes. Most of the time, I probably put 7,500 miles a year on my bicycles and maybe 2,000 on my car when I drive to Colorado. I applaud you for doing this workshop tonight, and also for all the improvements they've done in the city, because I've been biking for 31 years, and they've really been making efforts to make it a lot more easier to cycle. One thing I'd like to bring up, though, is there's this disconnect between the Climate Action Program and our urban forestry. Sacramento has lost more canopy coverage in the past 10 years than they have in the prior 25. Let me give you an example. Our street project, 26 trees cut down for beautification. The Sacramento Commons Project, down there where Capitol Towers is, 199 trees. These weren't little trees. These were big trees that were cut down. You have the proposed Crocker Art Museum parking garage. We are going to cut down trees and take away parkland to build a parking garage. This is absurd. The state of California has jumped into it, too. On their new buildings, Health and Human Services, they cut down all the trees. Natural Resources, they cut down all the trees. But more importantly is, we're losing the space. On these buildings, the new state buildings, they don't have as much setback as the older buildings did. And so, once you lose the space, it's gone forever. Passenger drop-off zones, underground utilities. Sacramento, we're in a crisis here. We're losing the space to grow canopy trees, and we all know the trees sequester CO2 and give us oxygen, and we need the oxygen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Rosie Yakub.
Hi. My name's Rosie Yakub. I live in, now in District Seven. I actually put some detailed comments into some correspondence, which maybe you'll take a chance to take a look at. I have some ideas in there about how you encourage more people to get on a bike. I've been biking, and I wrote this comment in the 1990s, which means we're moving kind of slow, and it's time to pick it up. I'm riding the gutters and sidewalks of Main Street, watching 15-lane freeways roll by, and wondering when we'll use federally matched funding for transport that doesn't muck up the sky. I wouldn't be fussy if they only would tax gasoline and give free bags to all those who've answered the call and traded pollutant for keeping themselves lean. On the road, there's a rush to get to the place you are going to, and in traffic, the journey is certainly not the reward. At least on my bike, I can feel the air that I'm moving through. So although I may go at a pace that is slower than you, I'm enjoying the ride. Please work to get more people on bikes. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Saba.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Deb Banks, Executive Director of Saba, and I live in Councilmember, Member Gera's district. Saba recognizes the work done to date on this effort, and we thank you. That said, while we endorse the big ideas presented tonight, we urge you to think bigger. Fund the bicycle superhighways, absolutely. Close the gaps in the trail system, for sure. These are great first steps. And then, go bigger. Create car-free districts around the city. Bring safe routes to schools, to every school in Sacramento. Finally, let's make good on our promise of Vision Zero. Anything less than zero fatalities should be unacceptable. And when we prioritize people over cars, and when we do, it'll be great for the environment, great for climate goals, and great for Sacramento. Not only has everybody here mentioned this to you tonight, but so have the 1,300-plus people that have signed the petition that I sent along earlier today. Thanks for your time. Please, go big, or go home.
Thank you for your comments. Next is a phone number, last four digits, 8171. Phone number, last four digits, 8171, if you'll unmute.
I'm here.
Please proceed.
Hello, my name is, thanks. Hello, my name is Jordan Romaldi, and I'm representing Walk Sacramento Doing Business as Civic Good. We're a nonprofit organization focused on co-creating communities, neighborhoods, and places where everyone can thrive. Active transportation and community development are core to our mission. We appreciate the city's commitment to reducing greenhouse gas emissions through smart transportation policies, particularly those focused on promoting safe walking, cycling, and rolling. Completing a bikeway network within four miles of the central city is a critical step in the direction of improving connectivity throughout Sacramento. However, this concentrated approach does not allow for the safe travel of students and families for the entirety of their journey, resulting in dangerous gaps, particularly in school zones located along the city's high-injury network. Furthermore, adopting a four-mile radius does not account for the inequitable distribution of adequate pedestrian and cyclist facilities outside of this radius. Thus, we call upon city council to incorporate a city-wide safe routes to schools approach within its transportation and bikeway network policies, giving priority to schools located along the high-injury network and in our environmental justice communities, where 44% of fatal crashes occur, according to the city's Vision Zero Action Plan. Ensuring the bikeway network smoothly and safely connects to essential destinations, particularly school sites, will increase the likelihood of their use for daily trips. There are 48,000 students in Sacramento City Unified School District. That's 48,000 opportunities to reduce BMPs by making active transportation safe and convenient beyond the central city alone. Thank you for your consideration of our comments, and we look forward to staying involved throughout this process.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Ms. Coleman.
Hi, my name is LaMia Coleman, and I live in District Four. Thank you to, to our, to our leaders, to city staff for the work you guys have already done. I've really appreciated and enjoyed listening to the presentations, the panelists, and the focus of the workshop. I wanted to, to underscore or highlight the equity issues that Ms. Pope Harden uplifted, and the reality that in many neighborhoods that have been disinvested in over decades, it requires more travel to access daily necessities like work, food, and other needs. As I've biked to substitute teaching jobs, I've been amazed and honestly a bit afraid by the number of young, primary-age students who bike and walk to school on streets that I, as an adult, am not totally comfortable on, or some that I'm completely uncomfortable on. As I've, and this has been especially true, as I've traveled to schools in southeast Sacramento. There are many pieces to the problem. I know electric cars are sexy, but they have, they have a lot of the problems that cars generally have, including tons of toxins in their batteries. We absolutely need quality, frequent transit, paired with investments that make biking, walking, scootering both safe and attractive. It's a lot nicer biking through land parks than it is through some of the neighborhoods that don't have the tree cover, that maybe don't have the, the lighting is quite as good. And housing is a huge piece. If people can't afford to live close to, to what they need, they're forced to have these longer travel distances. So we need to have affordable housing. Land use planning hat, can't just be in a silo. We have to look at it in the whole. So I do support the, the staff big ideas, and as others have said, it's a beginning. It's not enough. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Doug Thompson.
Hello, and thank you, Council and staff. I'm commenting this evening on behalf of Sacramento Area Congregations Together. Sacramento Act is a multicultural, multi-faith organization representing some 56 congregations, as well as schools and neighborhood groups. We work to change conditions to create justice and equity, including conditions in our transportation system. Now personally, I've spent several decades commuting downtown by bicycle from East Sacramento, and mostly enjoyed the good side of getting there without admitting there. But many of our working families instead cope each day with the bad and the ugly. You've talked about it tonight, the roads and intersections that are dangerous for active transportation to jobs, or shopping, or getting to school, or just to the transit stop, particularly in the parts of our city to the north and the south and southeast. Choosing to do the right thing for your children and grandchildren's future means taking significant personal risk in the present. Therein lies the urgency of this moment, and further reason to focus thought and resources on the near term, even beyond the climate emergency and, and the extreme heat events that will have higher impact on lower-income communities. We need safe and clean transportation beyond the four-mile radius, because continuing to favor the speedy movement of motor vehicles through neighborhoods continues to mean more loss of life and neighborhood vitality. Sacramento Act believes that equity must drive public policy, and we believe in the potential for transformation of people potential for transformation of people and of institutions. And like Jennifer said, surely that transformation can extend to the transportation system. We can make it fair, inclusive, and equitable for working families throughout our region. But we need to start with a city commitment to focus squarely on the neighborhoods that have experienced historical discrimination and disinvestment. When we get to the discussion of resources, let's have in mind the critical need to deliver safe and clean mobility in the neighborhoods and for the neighborhoods most often left behind. Thanks for taking my comment tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Sarah, or Sue Terranishi. Sue Terranishi. We'll go to the next caller, Matt Friedman.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. I'm a professional in transportation, land use planner, and my first comment is to congratulate and commend the city staff and guest speakers on their presentations this evening, as well as some of the wonderful thoughts shared by our fellow citizens. So I'd like to speak about something a little different. And first is to encourage not just the council but the staff to look at transportation from a multimodal perspective, that each element of transportation can be used to its best, the most useful form. And we should seek to integrate, whether it's transit, light rail, biking, pedestrians, so forth, so there's a unified system. We should look at the proposal of extending light rail through Noatomas and onto the airport so we can have not just transit connection for people traveling, but also to airport employees. And on the subject of aviation, I suggest we look at the alternative vertical takeoff and landing aircraft in drones. If we could do some of our goods movement through airspace travel, we'll reduce congestion and clutter on our streets, and that will benefit everybody. When it comes to our active transportation, hats off to Sacramento for having a wonderful system. I'm a runner, so I've been through all over Sacramento, the Parkway, the Noatomas, and so forth, and it's a real gem. But we could do more, and I encourage the city to continue on its plans to do trail completion. Finally, when it comes to our kids walking to school, when we design new subdivisions, design the cul-de-sacs as cut-throughs so that the kids can walk to school and not have to go through these routes that will usually result in parents driving them to school. So I'm going to stop here because my time's up. But keep up the good work, and we'll make it work and happen.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Aionka Zalatar.
Hi, I'm city councilwoman. My name is Aionka Zalatar, and I'm a homeowner in District Two and current president of 350 Sacramento, a group of Sacramento's concerned about climate change and seeking climate justice. Today, we have an opportunity to create new ways of doing and being. We heard some really awesome examples from other cities doing trials that have led to more permanent changes. I liked, you know, the big goals that some of them had about, you know, everybody being within a half-mile of frequent transit lines. I really like the idea of tying executives' pay and contracts to delivering on some of these big goals. And of course, adding more trees to our poorest neighborhoods that are tree deserts. As Councilmember Valenzuela has put it in the past, it's not that the trees are racist. While the big ideas that the staff are presenting here are nice and should definitely be funded, we still need bigger, bolder ideas. Like, why can't we have permanent slow-street projects like Paris and other cities, like Kate brought up? Why aren't our cities being really built for people and not cars? We really can decide to fund some of these key projects that will positively impact the lives of Sacramentoans and slow the pace of climate change. We already know that the benefits of active transportation lead to healthier people, less smog, and making it easier for people who cannot afford to have a vehicle to get around. Car ownership is super expensive, and many of our neighbors are struggling to stay housed and put food on the table. The ability to get around without needing to own a car can be a lifesaver for the people in our community. These investments will benefit all of us, but especially those of us who are struggling to make ends meet. I urge you to fully fund the staff proposal in front of you, and to make these investments a priority with dedicated funding streams, and continue to improve the biking and other transit opportunities for disadvantaged communities, especially in South Sacramento and North Sacramento.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you. Next speaker is Lauren Salino.
Hello, my name is Lauren Saleno, and I'm a resident of District Four. Thank you to Mayor Steinberg and city council for hosting this workshop. I'm a mother of two young children and strongly support the prioritization of active transportation through increased funding and policy implementation. I bike regularly with my children for recreation, errands, and school. For me, it is truly the easiest, fastest, most efficient way to move kids around town. No car seats, no searching for parking, but that is a comfort developed over many years of cycling. I often hear from other parents that they would love to bike around with their kids too, but just don't feel safe. Infrastructure improvements for cycling would alleviate those concerns and help build a less car-dependent community with individual and community health benefits. The current and impending impacts of climate change also require a major shift towards public and active transportation. I want my children to grow up in a city where they can safely breathe the air and to have a future not defined solely by wildfires and excessive heat. Sacramento is not currently that city, but with bold action to support active and public transportation, it could be. Council should fund city staff's current project proposals and commit to continued funding and development of active transportation projects to reach our climate goals and protect our future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Rosanna Herbert.
Thank you very much. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Rosanna Herbert. I'm a resident of the new District Seven, and I am also on the SMUD board, but I'm not here speaking on behalf of SMUD. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Sacramento Metro Advocates for Rail and Transit. I can't tell you how important this workshop has been tonight. You know, we all know that we are behind. There's no question. We need a stronger transit system. We need the ability to move people around in a way that puts a priority on people and not cars. We have seen improvements over the last several years. We've seen RT improve through microtransit and the free rides for students. But we do need bold action. And along those lines, SMART would like to say that we very much support what staff has proposed, the seven big idea active transportation and transit projects, and we hope that you will fully fund them. But we also want you to allocate additional dollars to ensure the development and implementation of a comprehensive active transportation and public transit framework for the city. And I'll just end by saying that I would love it if we could just try even the bold idea of reducing speed limits to 25 miles per hour. Let's do something unique. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your commitment.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Liz.
All right. Hi there, my name is Liz. I live in District Four. We need to invest today in an actionable climate plan that prioritized Sacramento's low-income communities and communities of color. No more highway expansions. Let's get bolder around what's possible. When I moved to Sacramento three years ago, I sold my car to pay off some student loans with the hope that, having moved into the city, I would be able to make it work with my bike and public transit. And I had every reason to believe that I could, as I had the privilege of choosing where I lived and how close it was to work in the grocery store. After spending hours on the bus getting to and from meetings, I opted to get a car. Couldn't afford an electric because at that time, I couldn't find too many used, affordable electrics. However, there's no reason I couldn't bike and/or bike in light rail to my central workplace in South Sac. After trying multiple routes over multiple weeks, I found no way to get there without having to bike down Florin. And biking on Florin is very challenging and dangerous, so I gave up after a near-hit and opted for the safer, quick car ride to my office. Yesterday, biking down Riverside to South Sac, a car was taking a right-hand turn and nearly hit me. She did look left before turning right, and Riverside has a bike lane, but it's not protected and the cars are moving fast down Riverside, Land Park, Franklin, Freeport, Broadway, Stockton, all the corridors that act as these arteries north-south. Choosing bikes, light rail, and bus should be our cheapest and quickest options for community. We should make these easy choices for folks to make. As Nailah noted, the exciting piece about this is that investing in climate action means investing in community, prioritizing communities that have been under-invested in for decades. We need an actionable, accountable, and fully-funded climate action plan, and I also want to recommend keeping the public comment line open throughout the entire meeting, including during the public comment period, to create greater access to opportunity to comment on these topics. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jeff Lyttaker.
Hello, city council, and mayor, thank you for hosting this workshop. My name is Jeff Lyttaker. I'm from the state of California, and I commute to downtown Sacramento. And when I moved here five years ago, I bought a house specifically within a range of a bicycle to get downtown. And I did that for about a week before I decided that it was really dangerous and I was risking life and living, and abandoned that in favor of the car. And I was very disappointed for having spent potentially $100,000 more for a house that was small compared to something that I could have bought if I was going to drive anyway. So I would like to encourage the city council to allocate the $200 million you have left for. We definitely need a connected network, safe pathways, and a dollar spent on active transportation is the most efficient use of a dollar to achieve emissions benefits and reduction in the MT. So I'm looking for better ways than a dollar. I also want to bring your attention to the fact that active transportation infrastructure is not just safe pathways, which of course are important, and I'm a big fan of a connected network, but also secure bicycle storage and parking. I've noticed that there have been installed some stainless steel bike wheel holders and some in the second row, which is great. And we really need to see these at all of the light rail stations. For example, I cannot ride my bike to the station and take my bike out to work either. That option didn't work because my bike will be vandalized, stolen, or stolen the first day. So I would like to see the secure bicycle storage as well. Thank you very much for your time and for the opportunity to make these comments.
Thank you for your comments. Sarah, Sue Terranishi, if you'd like to present to the council, please unmute. It doesn't appear that she's unmuting. David Moore is our final speaker on this item. David Moore, it appears you're unmuted. It's your turn to present to the council.
Can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Thank you, sorry. My name is David Moore. I'm representing Walk Sacramento, doing business as Civic Thread. We're a nonprofit organization dedicated to co-creating healthy built environments, neighborhoods, and places where everyone can thrive. I want to begin by thanking the city officials and staff for conducting this meeting. This workshop is a critical component to hearing the needs of the community and how best to address our transportation problems. As a regional leader of Sacramento, or of Safe Routes to School, we would like to ensure the city effectively addresses students and their families' inability to walk, bike, or roll to safely access their schools. As my colleagues have noted, Sacramento Unified School District educates 48,000 students, and due to proximity to dangerous auto-oriented roads, many of these students and families, particularly those in communities with high concentrations of Black and Brown residents, low-income residents, and minority and/or immigrant populations, are left vulnerable to the dangers of current auto-centric street configurations. In addressing these concerns, we provide the following recommendations. We recommend strongly that the city adopt new policies allowing for the 15-mile-per-hour school zone to apply to all schools regardless of immediate road conditions. The city should provide physical traffic commons such as road diets, physically protected bike lanes, complete sidewalks, and complete street remedies within a one-mile radius of all school zones. While perhaps aside from Seattle, signs alone have largely proven ineffective at reducing traffic speed, signs and indicators of school zones, however, should be easily identifiable by drivers immediately upon entering and driving through these zones. And finally, we would like to see prioritized efforts to completing the current Franklin Complete Streets project, and begin efforts to adopt more complete streets along Martin Lees 13th Drive, among other high-injury networks and arterial corridors. Thank you for your consideration of our comments, and we are hopeful in the actions and investments that will ideally follow.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you to all the members of the public for your passion and for weighing in. Let me turn it back to the city council now for either questions of the panelists and/or conversation among ourselves. There's no specific action tonight, but I would sure like to continue to have a set direction where the staff and the public knows that we have something, ten amount of timetables, or the beginning of a strategic plan, not just for the seven ideas, but begin preparing for the next workshop around funding and how we're going to maximize the amount of money that we can attract to our city for a bold agenda. Let's start with Councilmember Bang, then Valenzuela. I may have it out of order here, I'm sorry, I'm just going right down the list here. Laloie and Harris. Go ahead, mine.
Thanks, mayor. Hi, everyone, good evening. First, I just wanted to take this time to just thank our city staff, both Jennifer's, Jennifer Don Wyatt and Jennifer Venema, for leading our transportation and climate work internally here in the city. I too really appreciate this workshop and want to thank our expert panelists for sharing their wisdom, their expertise and insight on this topic. I also want to take this opportunity to just say thank you to all of the folks who called in to share their concerns, vocalize their urgency on this issue, and provide some suggestions. I think, you know, as our panel have mentioned, and multiple callers called in, that truly transportation is really 50% of our greenhouse gas emission. And a major theme I'm hearing today, actually three major themes that I'm hearing today is that, one, the city, we're not moving fast enough. Two, zero-emission vehicles, which is something that our city has been working on and very proud of this work, that zero-emission vehicles alone cannot be the solution. And three, what we really need is a concerted plan with funding to support it. I think we heard over and over again, I've seen in the letters, that we got to move from moving vehicles to moving people. And a large part of transformation, when I think about just transformation in terms of transportation, is really also about behavior change. But I also know from a public health perspective that behavior can only happen in our communities if we have the built environment for it, right? That's really critical. And so I want to just elevate and highlight Nailah for sharing really the importance to continue to center equity in all of this work, because the behavior change and the built environment is truly needed, mostly in low-income communities of color. Jennifer, I wanted to ask if you could put up the big ideas that you presented, the map of the big ideas. First, I just want to say thank you just for your heart and hustle on the great work that you've been doing in the city, and really appreciate you bringing forth the seven big ideas. I do want to acknowledge, you know, I appreciate that the Stockton Corridor, you know, is being identified as a potential project, and it's really a great start given just the demographics and the income levels of residents and the community. I also noticed, though, can you go back to, okay, there goes the map, that the map in itself is also very central-city heavy. Nothing against E4, because I love the councilwoman that represents that area, but definitely just want to, you know, name that. And, you know, I didn't really see any of the big ideas located close to District Eight. And I just wanted to suggest perhaps an idea number eight. You know, as former councilmember Carr often mentioned, he, you know, he says that District Eight is a driving district. But I like to see us move away from being just a driving district. We talk a lot about the need to reduce vehicle miles travel, and I know in South Sacramento, we have a lot of cars traveling in South Sac on our two major corridor, Mac Road and Florin. And I really believe that we really need to focus our investment in areas and district that need this investment. And I just wanted to highlight- And I just wanted to highlight in particular because on the map, we have the Del Real Trail. I know that the Del Real Bike Trail and the South Sac Parkway Trail is in the surrounding area of District Eight. And I believe there was a conversation at one point about starting the construction on the Del Real Trail at the south end in D8 rather than the north end, which is in Land Park. And just curious, wanted to ask, you know, is it possible to move forward with construction that, starting in Metta View closer to the water tower? Just really wanted to make that suggestions because multiple constituents have reached out to me on that in particular. The big idea for number eight that I'm thinking about is that, you know, I understand that much of this is really dependent on funding. And I know that all of you are hustling hard to ensure that, as Ryan Moore mentioned, that we don't have silo projects. And at the end of the day, what I'm also hearing is that it really does come down to funding and making sure that we can set aside funding to support this. I'm thinking, I'm not an expert in transportation, but as I was listening to some of the public comments and just reading some of the letters that came in, you know, what are, aside from the funding, because I know funding has a big part to do with it, but wondering if there are some immediate things that we can do or add to our plan, even if it's like identifying some low-stress bikeway to community centers like Pennell from different neighborhoods or even identifying low-stress bikeway and walkways to our RT station. I know we have three of them in District Eight, Metta View, Florin and Franklin Light Rail Station. I often talk a lot about the Pennell Community Center, which is in the heart of Metta View. But sadly, what I will also share is that I know that most oftentimes, folks actually drive to the Pennell Community Center. They don't walk to the community center unless they live literally one block down the street, right? But most oftentimes, residents in Metta View actually drives there. And so I think identifying some low-stress bikeways and walkways to even starting with our community centers and to our RT station would be a really great start. I think doing these things can make a huge difference. I don't know what that dollar amount would be. I'm assuming it's definitely going to be more than the 200 million that you suggested, but wanted to just also share this idea as well because I do think it's these minor, but minor investment that can make a huge difference in many of the communities in our city, especially neighborhoods that I represent like Metta View. And I know, I'm just thinking also about District Six and also B5 and D2 in particular could really benefit from that. And so just wanted to make those suggestions. Also, just really, again, want to thank all of you for your great work and want to thank all the callers that call in. I think we hear loud and clear the need and then urgency that we got to move on this, not just having a plan, but it's really making sure that we put dollars to support, to support the work moving forward. So those are my comments, Mayor, and thank you so much.
So, Member Bang, Mayor, may I quickly interject? Because in my rush to wrap up towards the end after we had a lot of speakers, I neglected, I think, a very important thing. We are, we don't have a good planned low-stress bikeway network in South Sacramento, Southeast Sacramento or North Sacramento. And so what we've identified, everything here on this map is already a council-approved document or plan with the exception of Stockton. And so we are actually kicking off this April active transportation work in South Sacramento, Southeast Sacramento and North Sacramento. And our full intention is to work with these communities because we don't want to plan for them, we want to plan with them to identify what they need. And then we can, of course, include this in our action plan or our sustainability in transportation. And I just want to apologize for not mentioning that in the rush earlier today.
No worries, Jennifer. Really appreciate that and looking forward to those workshops as well. I think, I mean, one of the major themes tonight, as I'm watching my colleagues and listening to the comments, is that at the end of the day, it's also having the political will to set aside funding and to get funding to support this, these big plans, right? That we really want to move forward, forward with this. We got to find the money. And Mayor, you always say you're good at finding money, you know? And I think, I think right now is the time, and I really believe while there are multiple jurisdictions that oversee transportation like STA, folks are looking at the city of Sacramento to really lead on this. And I trust, Mayor, that, you know, you as Mayor, with our staff and with our community advocates, we could, we could really, you know, get things done and it moves in a way to really change the transportation system in Sacramento. So, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Valenzuela, then Laloie, then Harris, then Jen.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Bang. I just want to lift up and support your points. And I think there's a ton that, you know, Jennifer and the whole city team and the public works are doing so many little things and big things that aren't reflected on this Map One project that is no longer in my district that I know Councilman Virginia feels really strongly about in terms of finishing the Sacramento River Parkway Trail, for instance. You know, staff has been estimating that and thinking about what easements would cost to go through Little Pocket and that sort of thing is exciting and also off-radar. But obviously, as affordability gets worse and worse and more and more people move from my part of town to North and South Sacramento because we just can't afford it here anymore, it's going to become increasingly important that we have these networks. That just makes sense for everybody all over the city. It's already very important. But more and more people are coming downtown from further and further away. But I do want to say that, I mean, again, reiterating the mayor's comments, that this is just one workshop leading up to our climate action plan. And we're going to have a whole nother set of conversations around scenario development and what it's going to look like to push harder and faster. And so, but really looking at this conversation specifically, as my colleague just mentioned, you know, it's really two buckets. There's like one bucket, that's how do we clean up the transportation that we have? You know, access to zero emission vehicles, zero emission transit, zero emission freight is really important. And so I'm going to start pinging a lot of questions for future workshops, not at all expecting staff to have this information here today. But one thing that would be super helpful for me, city team at our next workshop, would be a breakout of the transportation emissions between passenger vehicles and freight, if that's possible. I think there's obviously very different approaches for passenger vehicles versus freight. And I know a lot of folks, especially living in a freeway interchange, like a lot of us in the central city are, it would be really great to understand how much of what we're seeing comes from different sources to the degree that it's capable. Speaking of freight, another research question I have for staff is about efficiency. You know, I know that some days if I walk out in the middle of the day, I'll look down my street because I live on a grid, nice, long, straight street, and I'll see three, four Amazon trucks delivering packages. And I'll think, you know, there's got to be a way for us to demand greater efficiency from these vehicles, not just in terms of the fueling that they use and making them electric, but also in terms of the routes that they take and making sure that they're being strategic and thoughtful and not just sending out trucks and mid-sized cars to our region throughout willy-nilly whenever there's a demand, but actually coordinating. I don't know if local jurisdictions, what the limit of our authority would be for regulating that type of activity. And so that's another policy question I'd love staff to look into before our next conversation on our climate action plan. But obviously electrification, again, as my colleagues have mentioned, is it going to get us there? Obviously, just as a sidebar, because I've been getting more and more into where the battery materials come from, which is a very extractive practice that comes from very volatile parts of our world. And we can't keep relying on cobalt and lithium and other minerals that are finite in their own right. That's not going to be the solution. It really is going to put a huge load on our electric grid. But as Nailah said, we really need to refocus on reconnecting communities. And what it really comes down to, how do we get folks out of their car in the first place? How do we actually ensure that they're safe and bike and pet? How do we actually ensure that people don't have to drive super far to get to a high-quality school, to get to an urban green space, to get to their job because they're able to afford to live closer to where they want to go? And their neighborhood has the amenities and the stuff that they need so they're not forced to go across town as Nailah and so many in our communities do in order to access opportunities. So I know I've talked to Jennifer a little bit about modeling for what the impact is. And I know there's been some research done by folks like Chris Benner, who's now at UC Santa Cruz and others around like how far away people are coming into our region for jobs and really trying to get a better grasp on where the land use decisions are starting to factor into this passenger emission trend. What is that, that gap? Because that is something that we can solve for and it's very timely, given that we're doing our general plan zoning update right now. And it's a real opportunity for us to think about, how do we get food into food deserts? How do we start figuring out how to solve for these issues so that every neighborhood has the amenities that they need so people aren't choosing if they want to to go far away but not having to for the sort of basic day-to-day materials? So any other research, even if it's kind of academic that you could send my way, staff, I know you all read this stuff, and I'll try to track down some on my side as well. But yeah, and I guess just for more of an editorial comment to finish off here, I mean, a detailed strategy so that we can work together with a common vision, I really want to say that this definitely involves funding. And I'm glad that Jennifer and the team pointed out how much this will cost. But I'm also really glad that they said that the funding is out there. This is not a matter of there not being funding out there. This is a matter, colleagues, of whether we have the political will to implement a strategy that engages the community and puts forward the match funding so that we can start pulling down those resources that do exist. I have seen corridor transformation projects through the Urban Greening Program. I have seen what other cities and jurisdictions have done. And the missing piece is our commitment, not just to a common vision, which Ryan talked about with the Transportation Priorities Document, and where are we going and what is the priority and rank? And let's move in a concise and concerted direction. But it's also really about us putting forward, as I know Councilmember Harris and others have said in previous budget cycles, we need to start putting forward this match funding from the general fund. This isn't a hard problem to solve. Every one dollar we put forward is probably going to bring back 10 times that many dollars. And so this really is about the political will for us to start implementing these solutions and prioritizing that in our budget, just like we would want to if we want to have cleaner to breathe and really avert climate catastrophes. So I know a lot of folks that are listening and really want to clear a resolution tonight. I just want to again note that this, in my mind, is all leading towards a climate action plan. And this is not just about us colleagues figuring out what we're going to do, but this is also about us telling the community what we need their help doing. If it's a sales tax measure, if it's a county-ballot measure, if it's a commute tax, whatever like that is, I used the wrong phrasing, congestion fee, you know, all these different things that we would be doing, we're going to need your help to get that done. And so eventually, I see this as a conversation of being, this is what we know we need to do. We're going to commit our side of this when it comes to policy, general fund dollars, the type of work we need to do. And we're going to need the community's help because there's no way we're going to sum out this, not just in terms of consumer choice, but in terms of the political will. And I think we can do it based on the calls and energy on tonight's line. So thank you, Mayor. That's it for my comments for now.
Councilmember Laloie, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I want to thank the guest speakers for their time and their valuable information that they shared with us. I want to thank all the callers that called in. And also want to thank our city staff for putting, for working so hard to be able to provide us some very important information. You know, I completely agree with my colleague, Councilmember Bang, that we do need to take some big steps, but can we make some minor, can we take some minor steps right now that would kind of help this? So just a few questions. I know we have a lot of biking paths throughout the city. I wanted to know, Jennifer, has your office or department, have you guys reviewed these biking paths? Are they up to par? Are they being maintained? Are they all usable by the public?
Ryan Moore, who's on public, can speak better to this. And my, our department, which is outside of my division, our streets folks, they actually maintain or share news paths. And so they go on a rotating basis to ensure, there are some. And actually, there's one in your district that is quite old and made out of concrete that we're working on fixing because it's a little bit more complex and a little bit more expensive. But we do, we do maintain them on a regular basis. Ryan, did you want to add anything to that?
Sure, I'll just add that the difficulty with most of our off-street bike trail system is it's not eligible for the types of funding that we have. We use gas tax for maintaining our roads. Gas tax is not able to easily translate into bike trails. So we are, we are able to use some smaller pots of funding that we get, but it's not nearly as much as we have per mile for the rest of that roadway system. So we do get to it, but it's not, it's probably like the rest of our roadway network. We would like to do a lot more. We do what we can with the funding that we have.
Is it? So I guess if you could come back with this, I wanted to know if I want to ride my bike from North Sac to downtown, is it easy? How is the safety issues? Is it well-lit up? You know, some of the basics that we can share with our constituents, that they can actually not use a car and just bike to downtown from North Sac. Also, the, some of the various bus stops that we have, and I can only speak about my district, have we evaluated some of these bus stops to see, do we need a bench there? Do we need a cover there? So make it more pleasing for, you know, the riders to get on this public transportation? And I don't know if that study or that something has done to create a report on that. If you have, it'd be great if you can share it. If not, in the next session that we were talking about transportation, we can discuss it.
Yeah, we don't have an inventory of that at our handi. We can look into it and report back on it.
Great. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Laloie, that's part of the audits that we'll be doing in your council district that will be starting this spring, evaluating walking, biking and then transit access improvements, which includes information about bus stops.
Great. Thank you so much. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Laloie. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thanks again, Mayor. You know, we heard a lot of testimony about how we need to fix our transit system, how we need to make it more efficacious for our constituents. And Henry Lee brought up that we fund our transit system with a sixth of a cent of tax revenue compared to multiple cents in most other jurisdictions. And yet, our public transit system is really not bad compared to a lot of, a lot of other municipalities because the staff has been so effective at bringing down federal dollars. You know, if we truly want a better transit system, it is going to take hundreds of millions of dollars. And we can certainly get some of that from the federal government, but we have to wrestle with the idea of a local tax measure at some point because our investment in RT is very meager compared to most jurisdictions that have transit that serves their community better. Look, fixed track, light rail is extremely expensive, extremely expensive. And we need to sort of revision that, re-envision that. That's why I love the idea of the BRT system on Stockton. It's a good place to start. One of the things that I heard tonight often was that electric vehicles, EVs, are not the only answer. That's clear, they're not the only answer, but they can be a lot more robust than they are. Our staff has been very effective at moving charging infrastructure throughout the city, as has RT been doing the same thing. And S-MUD is a big player in that as well. You know, I've been driving all-electric for nine years now, and I thought at the first, there's no way I could afford an EV. And then I heard an article on NPR, actually on CAP Radio here, and a guy was talking about how cheap it was to own, well, not to own, but to lease and operate an EV. And he spelled it out on this radio program about how he got leased, where he got the lease, how much he spent on fuel, how much he didn't spend on maintaining a vehicle. And I made the jump and I went down, it made sense to me. I went down, I leased a Nissan Leaf, and it all proved true. It was cheaper, much cheaper than driving, you know, a car with an engine that runs on fossil fuel, much cheaper. And I found in my nine years of driving an EV that I am saving a lot of money compared to driving any of the cars that I had where I pumped gasoline. I don't change oil. The only thing I've done on these cars is changed the windshield wipers. They are an efficient way to get around. I recently drove to Monterey and what would have cost $100 in almost any other car, cost me $24 in electricity. You know, EVs can work for many, many people. I think they just don't realize it yet. I think that we should spend a little bit of money to educate people about how they can get into an electric vehicle because on balance, over time, driving an EV is tremendously cheaper than driving a gasoline vehicle. Now, I will never go back. EVs are, for me, certainly are the answer. And so one thing I wanted to talk about, Jeff Tumblin talked about in San Francisco, that they are going with the low-cost options to change the way they use their streets. And I wanted to ask you, Jennifer and Ryan, you know, he talked about using paint and stanchions to really slow traffic down and make things safer. Have you fully analyzed the cheapest ways that we can make change the quickest? I expect that you have looked at it, but it was really interesting that he acknowledged that doing the big splash projects, they're hard to attain without substantial funding sources. That he acknowledged that doing the big splash projects, they're, they're hard to attain without substantial funding sources. And, and the second part of the question is, uh, Mr. Zimbabwe talked about taking their arterials down to twenty-five miles an hour. That's very intriguing to me. Uh, you know. Many of the calls that I get as a council member are about a lack of safety on our corridors. Specifically for me, it's North Gate. But uh, you know, in my previous district, uh, there were many calls about other arterials. That like Folsom Boulevard, many, many uh traffic accidents, high speeds. These were calls that we fielded every week. And I'm wondering what you two think in our Department of Public Works. How could we actually slow traffic down, make our streets safer in a low-cost way? That would make people feel more safe crossing the streets, using the streets with bicycles, et cetera. It, it's an intriguing idea to me. I think that um, I don't know, maybe they have something in the water up there that, that makes people obedient. You know, that follow their speed signs that maybe we don't have in Sacramento yet. But the idea of slowing traffic down, I mean, look, I've been trying for two years to get three signals on North Gate to slow down speeding. You know, and, and we will get there, but that's not the complete answer. Maybe, maybe more frequent signage, as he suggested. Uh, and maybe we could actually change behavior in a more low-cost way. So those are my questions to you. And the last thing I wanted to say is. One caller called in about drones and electric air. Well, look, I'm a pilot and I am working on electric vehicles that fly. And I think that there is tremendous potential there moving forward. And uh stay tuned because I think you're going to see major changes in the air in Sacramento. So if you guys could answer those questions, I'd appreciate it.
More than happy to, Councilmember Harris. I think first I'll start with the um. Are we able to or willing to do the low-cost, quick-build type projects that San Francisco does? I want to caveat that San Francisco's transportation budget is significantly larger than ours. So what they call quick build is really what we do on a normal basis. Um, and you'll see our separated bikeways that we built are almost identical to their quick build projects because they can fund those locally, whereas we can't. However, we are willing to be um innovative and, and try out new things, our slow and active streets that we did. In, in some locations it was successful and others maybe not so much, but it was an innovative and learning process for us to do. And if there are opportunities and we do have the budget, I think it is something that we're, we're always willing and open to doing. Um, and to the question about speed limits um on our arterials. Um, we follow the state regulations around setting speed limits in California. I don't know what Seattle's are. I suspect it's similar. Um, and we take advantage, we round down as much as we're legally allowed to. Um, and with the new Assembly Bill forty-three that took effect January first this year. We are going to be looking into how we could take advantage of that to lower speed limits. We'll definitely talk with David Adraslan, who is our City Traffic Engineer, who is the decider of things about where our signs go and how often. About that concept of more signs. Um, although I don't think that Sacramentoans are as uh rule-following maybe as those folks in Seattle. And follow, follow the guidance of the signs, uh, but it's something that we can definitely look into. Uh, Ryan, did you want to add anything to that?
Uh, I think you've covered it, Jennifer. Let me just point out quickly, uh, Jeffrey did mention. A lot of those quick builds are experimental and you kind of do them and see what works and, and, and go back and refine. I think we learned a lot from the slow streets that we'll come back and do. I also want to give Jennifer some kudos, the, the parking protected bike lanes we've done downtown were not a federal grant. That was a quick build. That was paint delineators, go out and do it. Um, no federal involvement. Um, and Jennifer spearheaded that, and I think that's a success. Um, and on this, the speed limit signs, like Jennifer said, we are beholden to the MUTCD. Um, putting out speed limits that don't comply with that. Um, any, any citations that were issued would be unenforceable. They'd be thrown out of court. So you, you want to stick to, you know, a, a rulebook that allows the whole ecosystem, both the engineered side and then the law enforcement side to work together to be successful. But thanks for the questions.
Well, understood, Ryan, but you know, if it takes state legislation to allow us to go for a lower speed limit, uh, we can certainly work with. Our assembly members and senators to, to look at that possibility. I mean, uh, I'm just intrigued by it. I'd like to do a little bit more investigation about how that's working in Seattle. How they affected it? Did it take a state law change for them to comply? It would be nice for us to have more flexibility. So maybe that's what it's going to take is some legislation. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, this has been a very, very incredible night, uh, evening and night. Um, I can't thank you, Mayor, enough for the workshop. Uh, the time that we've spent, the speakers that we've had, the information that we've all obtained. Uh, the speakers who have called in and uh really voiced their opinion on what we should be doing, and they were very voice truth. Letting us know that this is a call of action and that we don't want to lose this window of opportunity. So, and I've heard that from all the speakers. So I, I just congratulate us on the speakers that we had, the content that was spoken tonight. And the time that we've spent with this workshop. And Mayor, if I heard you correctly, there are going to be uh additional workshops that are going to come on top of this. And for those who came on late, if we could just again tell them when those workshops will take place, that will add on to what we're talking about tonight.
Yeah, what, what is the date of the next workshop? Um. Hi there, Jennifer.
Mayor, we're currently looking to the spring, so potentially a March or April date for the second workshop and welcome feedback.
Yeah, my, my feedback would be that based on the momentum that we have tonight, that it'd be in March, not April. I would hate to lose the momentum that we have. I would be willing to do another four to five-hour workshop if that's necessary. I would ask that we start it a little bit earlier, um, because uh for some, it's, it's nighttime. Is, is a little bit late for, for them to be up watching this. So anyway, um, I just think sooner is better because we need to build on the minimum that we, we have built tonight. I've heard some people talk about us losing our window of opportunity. Um, other, other people talk about um. That um bold is the minimum and that there's no opportunity to wait. And so I now have a sense of urgency based on the information I've gotten tonight to move forward at a faster pace. I mean, I'm ready to hit the ground, ground running. I'm getting, I'm ready to change my behaviors. And start biking into work and start, you know, doing more than I've ever done before to set the example for others. And so while I'm on that, I just want to say this, and then I'll be done. We went to Chicago. Um, and when we were in Chicago, we saw, we went to a program where the kids in their after-school program. The kids would work on fixing bikes. They would be given a broken bike. And the older kids who had been there for a while would help the younger kids to learn how to fix the bikes so that the bikes, they could then ride the bikes. To and from the program and to and from school. It was probably one of the most incredible programs that I've ever seen because those kids. They love being in there. They love learning. They love learning how to ride the bike and then they love learning how to help others to be able to take care of their bikes. And so it was just an incredible program and I, and I remember it like it was yesterday. And, and I started thinking about what Member Bang started talking about as far as the south area. We, we have a lot of relationships with community-based organizations. And we could, we could emulate that program here in Sacramento. For kids to be able to use their bikes to get to and from our community center, to get to and from school, to get to and from work. And that doesn't cost a whole lot of money. There are people with bikes in, in the garages that would donate bikes in order for the kids to be able to utilize them. And it's just something I think we can start the process and to get our kids starting to learn how to utilize bikes, ride bikes and be effective with bikes. And it's the education process of how to navigate on the streets with a bike that has to be done. We've got to do that education process. So I'm not talking about something that would cost a lot of money. I'm just talking about a bold idea that we need to now execute in all the different districts. And so I just want to say that I think there's a lot we can do. I know the things that are going to take two hundred million dollars to be able to do. But there's a lot we can do with what we have right now and the partnerships that we have. And so that little idea that I saw in Chicago, I'd love to see us with that idea right here in Sacramento, even if we took one portion of town. And then these bike trails that we're trying to open up now, me at the Sacramento River Parkway, trying to connect to the Del Rio Bike Trail. Trying to connect to the bike trail that takes you into, into uh Meadowview. I'm trying to go both ways and trying to open this up. So one day in my lifetime, I can travel from South Sacramento all the way to the city of Folsom. And we got, and, and that's to me, that's that bold idea that I want to see happen. And I, I, I can just imagine, I've got twenty kids following behind me going to Folsom with me for the first time in their life. So I'm just saying, let's, let's, let's start with what we can do right now. You know, I don't want to stop because we don't have two hundred thousand dollars right now. And I know we'll get that, Mayor. I know we'll get that in time. But I'm saying let's start with the ideas that we can do right now and, and start moving towards those great seven ideas that Jennifer has put up in front of us. Thank you, Mary. That's all I got for now.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Um. Final comment here. Um, I, I want to first thank everybody. The speakers were terrific, both the local speakers. Uh, our home, our home talent here as well as uh. The gentleman from Seattle and San Francisco. And of course, we're so blessed to have the great expert staff that is dedicated to this mission as well. Um, all the folks involved in the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change. Uh, SAC three fifty, all the advocates uh for more transit funding. Uh, you were all present tonight. And you were both sounding the alarm and urging uh us to not miss the moment. We also heard about some specific strategies tonight that would get us started towards a bold vision. Um, the seven projects, you know, sometimes the boldest ideas can be the simplest ideas. I too am intrigued by this idea of lowering uh the, the speed limit. In our arterials, if that's within our power, what a simple uh but powerful message that would send. I also heard a lot tonight about schools. I mean, interested about what's going on around our state and our country around safe zones for schools. The, the, how do we get kids to school more safely? Are there ways to have parents drop their kids off several blocks from the school and then have safe walk. Lanes for kids escorted to be able to then walk school? Would that be safer? We, we can't ignore the things that. Won't require necessarily a lot of resources uh to get us started, not in lieu of. The big ideas that require funding, but in addition to. But here's really what I want to end with, and I hate talking about process because. Get excited about ideas and substance and we go away inspired and then what happens? In the absence of focusing on process in the right way is that. Months go by and the hard work continues at the staff level. But there isn't a um, a synergy between that work. The community advocacy and the council decision-making. And Anne Stauschball talked in her comments about timely timelines. And I think timelines in government are really underrated. So I'd like to, I'd like us to focus and maybe it's appropriate for that March, April workshop. But maybe it is a specific council session either in between or right after. Where we actually prioritize the projects that we discussed today. That we understand what matching funds would enable us to go after state and federal grants. And then to have some recommendations about how we would. Uh, how we would allocate over time those necessary matching funds. A recommendation about what additional staff, either by contract. Or, or permanent staff is going to require to elevate and advance these efforts. And then to have a timeline of actual choices for the city council to make. That, that the public can look at and see very transparently, all right, this is what we are going to be doing together over the next year. Or at least what we are going to try to do. That tight organization and follow-up from this very impressive workshop that. Our teams worked so hard to put together is really, really important. Because like with some other issues that we deal with. Vision, desire. Has to be matched with a tight and easily understood outline for how we might. Accomplish what we are setting out to do. So that's really what I want to see here, um, so that we can all go out into the community and say, okay. It's not going to happen tomorrow, but here's what it's going to take for it to happen over the next. Year, two years, three years and five years. And then the community will follow us and we can follow the community at the same time. Let's not let inertia set in here when it comes to these seven big ideas plus a couple of the others we heard tonight. And we can get the money. I mean, we are well-connected. And you know, you do have a mayor who authored SB three seventy-five um and. Uh, and also the, the, the cap and trade funding for transit-oriented housing projects. So let's make sure we're getting our share in more, but let's be organized about it. Um, we'll feel stronger and the public will gain confidence that we intend to back up what we have all talked about here tonight. All right, everyone. Thank you. What a great inspiring evening. Thank you very much, everyone. If that, that is our formal agenda for this evening, members. Are there uh members of the public that want to testify on items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have several hands raised. Um, may I read board and commission appointments to the record first?
Yeah, Madam Click, if I may, I'm going to just, uh, as the vice mayor, she would just close it out for us tonight, please. And if not, the mayor pro tem or somebody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I got, I gotta get off. Thank you.
So the following board and commission appointments to the Civil Service Commission, uh, appointing Emmanuel Amanfor. And Catherine Elizabeth Miola to the Ethel McLeod Hart Trust Fund Advisory Committee, Clara Chapala. Manya Futral, Boyd Lemon and David Pacheco. To the Major U Community Advisory Committee, Teresa Rivera. To the Thomas Basin Conservancy Board of Directors, David Christofell. To the Preservation Commission, Justin Wisely, Daniel Herrick and Max Slavkin. To the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District, Raymond Latour. And to the Sacramento Disabilities Advisory, Advisory Commission, Alan McMillan and Tiffany Fink. Would you like me to turn to members of the public now? Thank you. Our first speaker is Daphne.
Yes, City Council, thank you very much for hosting a wonderful meeting. Um, I would like to see if there is a way that the city can publish. When they do outreach, which zip codes they actually are addressing and the number of participants in those zip codes. Because it sounds like when we do outreach, we're not reaching all of the communities within the city of Sacramento. And we would like to make that more of an open process. So if there's a way to do. Um, I know that you have public, you have issues with um privacy. So if there's ways to um accumulate zip codes or street locations on where we're actually receiving input, that would be helpful to the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Claire. Claire, if you'll unmute.
Yes, sorry. Um, good evening, Mayor and City Council members, or good evening, council members.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, or good evening, Council members. I, I'm calling to say that I support the use of city property to temporarily allow for safe camping until permanent housing is made available. I know that basically if y'all do anything on this issue, you catch flak for it. But I just wanted to say that this is definitely a step in the right direction. The folks camping are our neighbors and even though they don't have a permanent address, they are your constituents and these are their parks too. They deserve to exist in peace and this is an interim solution that allows for such peace. These are people that need housing, not dirt that needs being cleaned up. So much of our language promotes this idea that unhoused people, excuse me, are some sort of aesthetic blight that needs to be swept away. And I just, I want to encourage all of you to pay attention to that language because the people that use that language and the people that hold the attitude that this is an aesthetics problem are not interested at all in helping you solve this housing crisis. What they're interested in is perpetual forced displacement of unhoused people. And that is not a process that brings anyone, anyone closer to housing. So that is all I have to say. I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is PJ.
Yes, PJ, he him, as many of you know, for far too long, we've had no solution as the solution to homelessness. Clearly, that hasn't worked. Unhoused individuals exist in every neighborhood in the city. The current round of NIMBYs, as experienced by Councilmember Valenzuela in McKinley Park this past Saturday, is full of complaints and no solutions. Regardless of where they don't want unhoused people to go, unhoused people exist in every corner of every neighborhood. Better to be proactive and engaging to ensure they can transition out of that than to pretend as though it doesn't exist currently. Society has told, NIMBYs has told all of us that all unhoused people are bad, all unhoused people are drug addicts. All unhoused people have brought upon themselves whatever causes them to currently be unhoused, and they deserve it. And because of that, housed folks are willing to do anything up to and including finding reasons to jail them for merely existing, for being in areas where they don't want to see them or experiencing typical human being things, just out in the open, and merely because they don't have any other option. I prefer an all of the above approach when it comes to addressing homelessness that doesn't include treating unhoused people as children. Many of them have partners, support animals, and possessions that are just as important to them as they are to us. And it is cruel to ask them to give up all or some of those things to access services to help them survive. Those things help them survive when government fails them. Now, we've recently been better, but a vast majority of services available still require removal of many of these vital supports and are often overly complicated to access in order to boot. What I would like to see at the end of the day is more sites quicker. Even if they are for the time being, safe camping or safe parking, we need those until each and every district in the city has additional low income housing available to support folks on the street. What I would now like to see is viable resources in the city going left unused because housed people view their recreation as being more important than unhoused people's existence. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Rich Eaton.
Hi there. Thank you. Am I to understand the mayor has logged off?
That's correct.
Well, that's just great. Hopefully he listens to this in the morning or whenever he decides to do his job and listen to his constituents and, and the people that pay his salary.
You have a minute and 45 seconds.
I know. I have, I have a minute and 43, I have a minute and 42 seconds. And he's been ducking me. I want to know and I need an answer of how does not enforcing simple no parking laws protect people from COVID? How does not enforcing laws in certain parts of the city help anything? If I go downtown and I don't have money for a meter, I get a ticket because I'm supposed to pay that meter to park. That's the law. Cars are parked on Railroad Drive from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM right under a sign that says no parking, 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. It sets a shit show there that your own parking enforcement are afraid to go there at 9:00 PM. They're afraid to do their job because it's dangerous. No one cares. Mr. Harris has answered my call. Mr. Lololi has answered my call. Mr. Steinberg likes to hide behind the COVID excuse. I'm not exactly sure, Mr. Steinberg, why you're hiding or what you're hiding from, but I'd like you to be a man and answer my phone calls. I'd like you to be a man and take care of the street that is in chambers.
Thank you for your comments, sir. I need to direct callers that your comments need to be made directly to the full council. Don't single anybody out. That's just part of our parliamentary rules.
Well, the whole council is not the reason for Railroad Drive as a shit show. The mayor is, not the council. The mayor is the reason.
We're not going to take comments negatively.
Mayor is the reason.
Mindy, please call the next caller. Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Mark M.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hey, I'm calling in to support the temporary use of safe camping in places like Miller Park, public parks. I appreciate the city for taking this step, albeit a small one, to addressing the systemic issues that have brought about the current, current crisis. And I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is a phone number, last four digits, 0103. Phone number 0103, please unmute.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Yep.
Hello? Okay. Good evening, Councilmembers. Going to be mayor and city manager. My name is Sasha Vogt. As a resident of District Two, I wanted to bring your attention to a private use no fee lease agreement involving one of only two fully city operated community centers in all of D2, a district serving 65,000 or so residents. Last week at a meeting of a D2 Neighborhood Association, YIPSY staff shared that the Department of Economic Development reached out to them to provide space to a nonprofit currently registered in the city of Citrus Heights. A nonprofit whose board president serves as economic development manager for the city of Citrus Heights. A no occupancy fee private use lease agreement was subsequently entered into for the use of the Woodlake Community Center with minimal community outreach to the surrounding neighborhood and none to the broader D2 community. No outreach whatsoever or even notice of use availability to D2 or citywide community based nonprofits and service providers who have deep, who have deep roots and strong, well-established relationships throughout the city and within the communities they currently serve. When community members expressed concerns about displacement and lack of access due to this agreement, staff responded that community wasn't using it anyway. Negating the impact of pandemic shutdown, $50 an hour youth fees, lack of city programming, and longstanding accessibility issues. Community centers are simply not city staff's personal property to be given away at whim to the well-connected, particularly at no, at no cost to a non-city entity for the purpose of a fee-based revenue generating enterprise serving an absolute maximum of 30 children with no assurance that they will even be D2 or City of Sacramento residents, resulting in limited public benefit in proportion to the population.
Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
This is just not the best or the most equitable use of our community space.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is also a phone number, last four digits, 4366. Mr. Davis?
Yes. I'll probably send shockwaves to City Hall tonight. That's my intention. First of all, I want to thank City Councilman Jeff Harris. Somebody in my family said, he said some very kind words to our family business last week. I was so busy doing what I do that when I did research it, it was very kind what he said because to run a business with no money from City Hall that you've applied for, including a submitted RFP before COVID and a person who went to many Measure U meetings, you won't ever be able to tell me I don't know about what Measure U was. And I have documentation to confirm it. We're, we're at a, we're at a fork in the road now. You know, I'm, I'm hearing from, from people in my own district in front of my family and friends of 50 plus years that we have the best cheesecakes in the United States. The only thing about that is I don't get excited on accolades and compliments. My ego is not involved. This is a sound business that's being begged by the Better Business Bureau to renew. And it has to be sound business practices. That's why you won't hear anything negative about To The Band Back Cheesecakes. And I also want to send a shout out to the millennials. There, there's a gathering of millennials in Sacramento, all races, both sexes. They have us set up for the Super Bowl in LA. Now, I got to go to LA with the cheesecakes than where I grew up, Sacramento. And that happens this weekend and I had forgot about Valentine.
Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, I think everybody should come back to the chamber like Minty.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you, Mindy. Thanks, Mr. Davis, for your comments. All right, Council colleagues, do you have any comments, thoughts, ideas? Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I, Vice Mayor, I just want to, I'd like to submit an official letter to be added as supplemental material with mid-year discussion for consideration to the full council. I know that the mayor has, have submitted his letter and I'd like to submit a letter to complement his proposal. Currently, our city, as you know, have, have implemented new programs and support current programs to really address the pandemic that has impacted our, our young folk and particularly our Black Brown indigenous youth in the city. And as you all know, much of our youth funding has come through CARES and ARPA dollars. And once those dollars have expired, many of these programs will be reduced or eliminated. And the need is incredibly still dire. So in partnership with Councilmember Chenere, I'd like to submit a framework along with a funding request of how to prioritize investment. And would like to ensure that this letter is added to the supplemental material for the council to consider.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Vang. Councilmember Harris?
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I have an announcement and an ask of the city manager. The Stanford Settlement will again be holding a free COVID vaccine and testing clinic tomorrow, Wednesday, February 9th, from 9:00 AM till 3:00 PM. And we'll repeat that on Saturday, February 19th. For more information, visit the Stanford Settlement website. They have been great players over, over this pandemic to provide that service to the North Gate Gardenland community. I'm very proud of the work that they do. Mr. City Manager, you know, we've talked about safe walking to school. You know, quite frankly, we have good sidewalks, but they are obstructed. And the city attorney's office has created a sidewalk ordinance to address that issue, but has never made it to law and legislation for consideration. I ask that you put this on the log and hopefully we can get this to LNL for a discussion about efficacy and enforceability. I think that this is a very needed tool to manage safe walking space to schools and to actually to support our business community as well. So please place that on the log. It's already been vetted by Dork. This should be a very short turnaround and I would expect that of you to move this forward very quickly. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is a request to the city manager. I, I mentioned earlier today in the budget audit about deferred maintenance of our athletic fields, especially our soccer fields, our baseball fields. And so I, I want to look at it on a district level, but I think it might also be if we're going to look at it in one district, we might want to look at it throughout the city. Just to take a look at the, what kind of dollars are we talking about in order to bring more fields up to the condition of certain fields that seem to be the top request in the city of Sacramento. And so as those fields continue to be requested without additional maintenance, they, they will go down. But because we have the public so involved in helping to keep those fields up, they are the hot, most requested fields that we have. And so anyway, what we have to do is invest more and look at the deferred maintenance that we have that we have not spent on those fields. I'd like to do a study and try to figure out what can be done to increase the number of fields for the public to have more access, especially in the midst of a pandemic when we see more kids and families participating in sports activity.
Absolutely. Councilmember Jennings, we have that information. We have a comprehensive list of deferred maintenance within YIPSY. And we will look to break out all the ball fields and provide that information to the council.
Right now, I'm looking at soccer and baseball and also softball for our girls. Thank you.
And City Clerk, I'd like it noted for the record that this Charger fan did call on the Raider fan with his Raider gear in the background. Can you put that, Mindy, in the official record, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Chenere?
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I, I just want to add a couple of things to what Councilmember Vang said about the letter that we've put in. You know, particularly when we think about community based organizations and we've done a lot of, I think, really significant and worthwhile investment within, into community organizations in the past number of years. But one of the worst things we can do is do a two-year grant or a three-year grant where it takes a year to get a program up and running. And by the time they're doing that and writing reports, their money is, is gone. This was actually a conversation I had with our new police chief about how do we sustain these organizations really to be partners in our neighborhoods. And so the bulk of the funds that we're asking for, which is a small amount overall, would be to continue funding some of the CARES funded CBOs who have shown success. So based on data, based on the metrics going forward in that way. And then a little bit of money, you know, I had asked last year for, for some funds so that we could make reservations for youth leagues at our parks free. And that never made it into the budget. I think it was $170,000 at that time. And I think everybody on the council had agreed that it was a good thing, but didn't make it into a final motion. So doing that and then thinking through and, and I'd love to put this on the agenda, Mr. City Manager, about what we're doing for youth workforce. We have a lot of programs going on. I think Christina Pollone, as an individual, is running about 12 of them by herself. And, and so thinking about building some capacity within that. We have the $7 million grant from the state and I want to make sure, or we want to make sure that it's used very effectively. And that, that's going to cause a little bit of need for some infrastructure and capacity building around the grant. So we look forward to talking about those things in the context of the entire mid-year. Thank you.
I appreciate if you could forward that letter to us so that we can start working because, you know, we're going to publish tomorrow for next week.
I think Councilmember Vang has the most recent copy and we can get that to you immediately.
Yep, I'll hit, I'll hit the send button as soon as this council meeting is done.
Great, thank you.
And then just one last thing, City Manager, from Councilmember Vang and I, and probably Valenzuela as well, like an update on the discussion around prevention of marijuana being marketed towards youth. There's been some conversation around this. Councilmember Vang's really the lead. But we'd like it to get back to us. As you can, Councilmember Valenzuela's been chasing it down and chasing it down. But we'd really like to see that expedited back to us, please. We'd also like to skip law and ledge and come back to the council since three of us are working on it. And if that's possible, I'd like to ask you for your help there.
Okay, will do.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else from my colleagues? All right. Thank you all. Have a great night and rest of your week.